We are going to call this month's regular meeting to order, please. So if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is hand, one nation, none of our individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, welcome to everybody who is here this evening. We appreciate your attendance on what we will consider a Red Thursday. So thank you for being here. Those of you who are watching online, we also understand why you're doing that. So thank you to those of you who are participating online. 1.04 is the adoption of tonight's agenda, so I would take a motion on that from one of our board members, please.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion in a second to adopt tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion on this agenda? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going to go to 2.01, the superintendent's report, and we will turn it over to Dr. Buck.
So this month is our board priorities update, and we're going to start off with Dr. Barger.
Good evening. As you know, we have three board priorities, and we have been providing written reports. And then we will follow up on a regular basis with the presentations to supplement those written reports. So when we look at the first of the board priorities that we will be reviewing this evening, we'll take a look at the priority, increase the academic achievement, ever for child through a focus on innovative practices, student well-being, and enhanced accessibility to educational opportunities. So one of the things I would like to reiterate each time we talk about our board priorities is the alignment between board priorities, our comprehensive school improvement plan, the CSIP, and all of the work that's going on in the district. So this particular board priority is guarded largely by action plans within Goals 1, 2, and 3 of CSIP. And as a reminder, that CSIP is that comprehensive document developed by stakeholders, eventually approved by the board, with the priorities, of peak priorities of career, leadership, instruction, mental wellness, and belonging or climb. And then the goals, again, these three goals being the focus aligned with this board priority. Providing a high-quality experiences with access and opportunity for each student, fostering a responsive and caring and inclusive environment, and providing a meaningful public engagement that includes all stakeholders as vital partners in LSR7 education. One of the things that we will do and have done is we have done quarterly updates with regard to in-depth reviews of updates as it relates to those action plans. And those documents will be provided to the Board of Education. We gave you the quarter, first quarter one, and a board update. We will provide the semester one also in a board documents update so that you can have that comprehensive review. But for the purpose of this evening, we have picked some highlights from that review to share with our stakeholders and with the board. So as we look at CSIP Goal 1, we will provide high-quality experiences with access and opportunity for each student. We can see that there are a number of action plans that align. Action Plan 1, the inquiry model of instructional framework, establish an inquiry model that's based in, an instructional framework that's based in inquiry. Action Plan 1.2, to use data-based instructional decision-making, which involves developing a district dashboard and building-level data reports. Action Plan 1.3, our real-world learning and career pathway expansion, which involves increasing the frequency of opportunities for all students to engage in career exploration and workforce-ready skills. Action Plan 1.4, curriculum resource and instructional support, which is a robust and quality curriculum resources and instruction. 1.5, the expansion of extracurricular and co-curricular opportunities. And 1.6 is our Portrait of a Graduate. A few, just a few, all shoved onto that slide, a few of the highlights as it relates to that 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, 1.4, 1.5, and 1.6. So essentially, all of the action plans that come from our CSIP Goal 1 that relate to Board Priority 1. So we've had an instructional framework team that has come together. It is all of our lead learners, our building principals, and district leadership in the area of instruction, and we are being led through inquiry work, the power of inquiry by Kath Murdock. In addition, the curriculum department is developing how that inquiry framework can be folded into their curriculum management plan. Project Lead the Way, an inquiry-based approach to Kasich science lessons in a partnership with the Education Foundation, has provided regular kits, hands-on material kits, for our students to use an inquiry-based approach to science under Project Lead the Way. The Panorama Student Success Dashboard was fully implemented in all of our schools, and we have a comprehensive district dashboard to look at student data as part of our district MTSS process. We have district and building-level dashboards in development in collaboration with principals to indicate to us what they want those dashboards to include to be meaningful for school improvement in their space. We have Career Navigators and Diploma Plus, RIASEC, they have been presented to all of our schools. And we have U-Scienc, RIASEC boxes, Transio, and Market Value Assets, just some of the highlights happening in that new career department or that expanded career department. We have Career Curriculum Specialists and Career Navigators, starting the process of revamping the 6th through 12th career curriculum. We've had a career curriculum for quite a while, but it needs a little bit of a kickstart to spice it up for 2021 for our kids, and they are in the process of that. Middle school principals have been working with our curriculum leaders to focus on priority standards to ensure that we are developing curriculum around what the principals and leaders and teachers need for priority work for our students. We have a team of stakeholders developing a tool for review of text and resources from a culturally responsive lens. We have cultural awareness and inclusion calendar, and we have curriculum teams reviewing those priority standards to ensure alignment with our documents. We've had a review team look at advanced studies coursework in the middle school. We've developed 6th grade middle school elective courses. We have a new course proposal that is aligned with Portrait of a Graduate that's underway for next year's process. We've been working on baseline data for extracurricular presentation, including an increase in Special Olympics focus so that we can work to increase participation and awareness of our Special Olympics program. And our Portrait of Graduate competencies were added to the graduate follow-up survey. So that's a lot, but really, it's only a sampling of some of the actions that have happened under CSIP Goal 1 related to Board Priority 1. When we look at CSIP Goal 2 related to Board Priority 1, which is fostering a responsive and caring and inclusive environment, that impacts Action Plan 2.2, 3, 4, and 5, which is culturally relevant pedagogy, student voice, professional learning, and student staff and wellness. Slightly smaller list. And some of this will come with reiteration when Ms. Sanders is up speaking to her board priority as well. We have Core Collaborative D-teams across multiple stakeholders group. As you know, we've been looking through LSR7 equity board policy. We have continued implementation of the board-approved equity plan. The panorama used to review our student data and make changes accordingly. Again, we have graduate follow-up survey edits to make sure that our district goals are aligned within that graduate follow-up. Superintendent's Student Council formed to get student voice. The professional learning and work time calendar shared so that we can clearly identify what our professional goals are and what that timeframe is. And we also identified Focused Fridays as part of our Late Start Fridays, which are Identified Fridays during the year in which everyone in the district is collaborating around the same topic, for example, their NWEA data or their Panorama survey data. Middle school principals and district leaders, just within the last couple of weeks, have attended an Avid conference in preparation for considering bringing Avid concepts to the middle school. We already have it at the high school. We've got ongoing NWEA work, Building Teacher Assistant Program revision. We have a graduate course program review and changes underway to better support our graduate programs. School-Based Healthcare MOU has been to the board and approved. We've got that underway. Panorama Staff Survey was used for the first time in the fall of 2021. We're seeing expansion of school health services, so that the goal is to eventually have an RN in each building. And we've purchased caring school communities for each of the six buildings. So again, from that Goal 2, that CSIP Goal 2 of sort of well-being, those are a sampling of some of the action plans that have, or some of the actions that have happened to support that first of our board priorities. And then really, there is just the one from CSIP Goal 3 that supports this board priority, which is that Business and Industry Partnership. There are many other action plans in CSIP Goal 3, but this is the one that aligns with this particular board policy or board priority. And really, under that, that's a lot of the work, I think you probably heard a little bit from Shannon at the joint meeting, but creating a new Partners in Education Guidelines, hosting Partners in Education facilitators meetings to review what Partners in Education can mean in terms of curricular connections for this year. Hosting prospective business partner breakfast with all of the attendees, followed up and having good dialogue about the way they'd like to engage in the district. Shannon did that. Starting formal collaboration with our faith-based community leaders on the topic of equity, developing a PFLAG partnership, and then our Continued Career Navigators work with our business communities and market value assets. So while those are just snapshots of some of the work that's happening, what I hope that you see is alignment between Board Priority 1, which you have outlined, our CSIP, the action plans, and the actions that are happening so that it feels cohesive as we're moving forward in the work. And so then with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Sanders, who will talk to us a little bit about Board Priority 2.
Good evening. So Board Prior, our next board priority states, "Meet each student where they are by utilizing an equity lens in decisions, actions, practices, and resource support." Many of the things that I will reference during my section of the presentation, Dr. Barger sort of touched on, and I'll go into some more details specifically about where we are through that. What I hope that we can gather by the end of this is there is a strong alignment between our CSIP and our Equity Plan, which leads us right into Goal 1 of our Equity Plan, which is governance and leadership. We have two strategic plans that we're guided by right now as a district, and that is our CSIP and our Equity Plan. And so our first step, and maybe it's not our first step, but the step that I'm most excited about is what's going to happen here in a bit, and that is the approval of Policy ACIB and the consent agenda. And that is the first step into really setting the stage and painting the picture for educational equity in LSR7. So I'm super excited about that and look forward to how our stakeholders can paint the picture and connect to that, that policy. Goal 2 of our Equity Plan is professional learning and development, and right below you'll see the connection to CSIP Action Plan 2.4. And this really is revolving around our partnership with Core Collaborative, specifically with John Cronapple and Floyd Cobb. We started our leadership orientation earlier this school year in September, followed up with the Board of Education leadership orientation. We have started Cohort 1. They're, they are, they just completed their day three of their training. Day four will be in January. And then Cohorts 2 and 3 will come onboard at the beginning of February. And Cohort 1 is the Lee Summit High School feeder pattern. Cohort 2 is the Lee Summit North feeder pattern, and Cohort 3 is Lee Summit West. All of our feeder patterns, or all of our cohorts will be complete in May. So we are running a tight schedule, and we're super excited about that work. Oh, and those teams are called D-teams, and that is dignity, inclusion, and belonging teams. Goal 3 is curriculum and instruction, and you can see the alignment to CSIP Action Plan 1.4 and 2.2. We just had a planning meeting to roll out our training for our text review tool. The, well, our goal right now is that we will have a core team of six staff members that will do the training. But the tool itself, we partnered with Kansas City-Kansas Public School District to learn more about their process, and then brought a team together here in district to create the tool and the process. Our plan is, it will take us six Fridays to train every building in the district, and so our tentative schedule right now is that all district staff members, certified staff members will be trained by spring break. Okay? So we're super excited about that. Also, coming next year, and I think we actually may have made it this year, our last elementary school welcomed EL students into their doors. It has been past practice that our, some of our elementary EL students went to a site, so they attended a different school because of staffing, and they weren't able to attend their homeschool with the people that live in their community. We have already started that process, but in the fall, all of our elementary students, EL students will be at their site schools, as well as our middle and high school. We will have two newcomer schools. One is, the high school is Lee Summit High School, and the middle school is Pleasantly Elementary. And then our newcomer elementary students will be serviced in their actual buildings. So we're very excited about that, and we are prepping and planning, and Malicia Cologne has done a great job of laying that pathwork for us going forward. Goal 4 is student-centered support and programming. You'll see the connection between CSIP Goal 1.5 and 2.3, or Action Plan 2.3 and 1.5, and that is an increase with opportunities in special education. Also, when we had one of our training, Dr. Tiller, who is one of our Core Collaborative trainers, said, "So I think we're going to, you all are going to need to create like a survey to gather some student data." And I raised my hand and said, "We have Panorama," and she goes, "Are you kidding me?" I was like, "Yeah." She said, "Hey, you're leaps ahead of other districts that they work with in being able to have student data at hand and accessible to be able to reference and problem-solve around." So I appreciate you all having that in place for us. So that Panorama data, Panorama data will guide the work of the D-teams. Also, our partnership with Burrell. Dr. Hill has done a great job with pulling the team together to lay out the path forward. They will come online in February, and we are looking at five to six schools. Those schools have been identified. Dr. Hill is working to schedule meetings with principals to start that partnership. Our first, what our plan is to every semester, to roll on five to six additional schools. It will take us about five semesters to get a Burrell therapist in every single building. And so that plan is in play with starting with five or six schools based on discipline data, our suicide data. And so the team really came together and looked at where was the biggest need right now, and that's where we're going to start. So you'll see those staff members roll over into buildings beginning in February. Also, coming up in winter 2022 will be a long-term suspension PRAD that will be facilitated by myself and Dr. Potts. And we're going to be looking at the long-term suspension hearing process, as well as the behaviors that can lead up to a long-term suspension. That PRAD is scheduled to be wrapped up at the end of February with some recommendations that will go to SLT for approval. And then our next goal is Goal 5, Parent and Community Engagement, and the connection is, to the CSIP is Action Plan 2.3 and 3.3. And again, it is the high school student advisory councils for the superintendent. Another layer of that engagement is coming through our D-teams. We have parent, staff, and student D-teams. We are currently meeting quarterly. We had our first meeting for second quarter here in this room for staff and students. We have students from all three high schools, and we will continue to meet quarterly throughout the rest of the year. Our plan is to take some of the qualitative data that is gathered in those meetings and present them back to SLT as we lay out pathwork for the upcoming years. Also, something that has gone great is the Board Comment Feedback Group. So anytime a stakeholder makes a comment at a board meeting, they'll receive a communication from our office thanking them for their comment, and then the option to schedule a meeting with myself to talk through more about their concerns and if there is action that needs to be taken or information that needs to be sent on to the next person. So that is still in place. We also have a monthly face-based leadership meeting that is focused on equity. I think we've been meeting for about four months now, and I think initially, they really wanted us to tell them, "What do you need from us to help keep this going?" And I think in our last meeting, I think I was more intrigued about what they're doing in their own spaces and trying, and learning from that. So it is absolutely a great partnership and just a time to throw things around and really garner support for everything that's happening in LSR7. The last thing on this list is a PFLAG partnership. One thing that I've heard a lot in this position and having conversations with parents and staff and students is that there is not a lot of support out in the community for our parents of our LGBTQ+ students. So we are looking at a potential partnership or a PFLAG chapter started in our area. The closest PFLAG chapter is in Prairie Village. That's the only one. So if you are a community member and would like to help facilitate that process, please let me know. It can't be affiliated with the district, but we are absolutely here to support because we know that we are here to support students, but we are also here to support families. And this is a way that we can help support families in our community. And then our last goal is Goal 6, Recruitment, Hire, and Retention, and it connects with CSIP Action Plan 2.1. We are working on your Grow Your Own. I think there is a Grow Your Own grant and the Consent Agenda also this evening. Dr. Del Sim and Dr. Carlson are working to establish partnerships with Tennessee State University and the University of Arkansas-Palm Bluff, which are two HBCUs, sort of in our regional area, but Tennessee State University graduates the most education majors out of any HBCU in the country. So that communication has started. Our plan is to get out there and get some FaceTime with them and start that, that process. We are also working on some focus groups to learn some more information. When we think about Grow Your Own, it's this idea that we have LSR7 students that go off into education programs, and then when they're done, they come back home to be educators. And what we're wondering is, do we have educators of color who were born and bred in LSR7 who go off to education programs but decide not to come back home? And if there are, we want to talk to them, and we want to know so that we can use that data to guide our next steps from the voices of LSR7 grads. So we had a meeting today to outline questions, and then that process will start in January, hoping to be wrapped up in February. So if you are, if you hear this and you are an LSR7 grad and you don't currently teach here, we want to hear from you. And then our last one that's on our list is applicant screening bias training coming out of HR. We're going to get this going right before hiring season, and really looking at what happens prior to the interview process. So in any type of hiring, the first or the, one of the biggest hurdles is actually getting into the interview. And so what we're going to look at is, do we have, when we're looking at our screenings, do we have biases that are there that are preventing or creating hurdles for applicants of color to enter into the interview process? And so, for example, there's data out there that supports that many educators of color enter the field of education through alternative certification routes. So they're, they don't traditionally go through your four-year education programs, at least the largest percentage. And so when we're looking at applications, if we see that applicants have gone through an alternative route, are we pulling them off because they haven't taken the normal path, right? Do, are they, are we bringing them in for interviews, or are they stopping at the screening process because that is a bias in our mind that if you didn't go through that normal process, then maybe your experience wasn't of the same quality as a traditional four-year program? So that's just an example, but we will be looking at all of those and providing training and support to all of our staff members who will be interviewing for this upcoming school year. And that concludes my presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present on the board priority that I champion. It reads, "Strengthen communication that builds engagement, collaboration, and confidence with both internal and external district stakeholders." And so one of the things that I want to talk to you about is the three principles that are really guiding our communication efforts this year. They are aligned with the CSIP, and they are comprehensive communication, community outreach, and excellent, excellent customer service. And so I'm going to talk to you first about comprehensive communication, and wanted to make sure that it was clear that our, our priorities and our work around comprehensive communication is aligned with CSIP Action Plan 3.1, and of course, Board Priority Number 3. I did want to start by just going through some principles that guide our work throughout the district. We believe that effective communication is a two-way process with staff, families, and students. That means we communicate to our stakeholders, and we provide opportunities for them to communicate back to us. We believe effective communication helps increase student performance, innovation, and well-being. We believe it's the responsibility of every employee in the district. We know that our people are our biggest ambassadors. And we believe effective communication is in the best interest of students and staff. I do want to take us back a year to our CSIP survey that was shared with our stakeholders at this time last year, and just go over two questions about communication that will help inform some of the action steps I'm going to tell you about later in my presentation. And so we asked our, our families, our staff, and our students, "How do you prefer to receive communication about the district?" And I just wanted to go over the top couple of answers. Our LSR7 e-newsletters were a top choice. District administration, either in person, through direct communications or the media, school e-newsletters, teachers and staff in the district, excuse me, principals and supervisors, and then our websites. And so really, the takeaway is from that data piece is that people want to receive their communication directly, they want it to their phone, or they want it in your inbox, or they want to receive it from people, that people are their trusted source for information. And so that was an important takeaway that informed some of our action plans this year. The second question that I wanted to go over informs some of our focus areas. So we asked regarding district-wide communication, what are some important areas for LSR7 to invest time and resources? Again, district e-newsletters was a top choice. More accessible public information and data. Live streaming district events. New, modern district and school websites. Virtual parent engagement opportunities. And social media platforms such as Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram were the top six choices. So as far as two-way communication goes, I just wanted to share some examples of ways of times throughout this past calendar year in which we communicated with our stakeholders about decision-making. We were, we were considering and provided opportunities for them to communicate back. And these, and the information we gleaned from those surveys informed some of the action steps that we are taking around the area of comprehensive communication. So we're investing in internal communications in some new ways, trying to implement issues-focused staff newsletters that are focused on issues, and we implemented a new information hub for administrators this year. Conducting surveys in different ways to try to guide communications. Experimenting with deep-dive one-topic e-newsletters, which is a concept we hope to expand. We created more than 50 informative videos in our first year with a full-time videographer and photographer. And of course, we also are conducting regular, are creating regular podcast content with our podcast, Sum It Up. The second priority I want to talk to you about is community outreach and support that aligns with CSIP Goal 3.3 and Goal 5 of our Equity Plan. So I wanted to be clear about how I define engagement, which is really a robust and direct means of engaging our school community in decision-making. Engagement is not necessarily strong communication because it involves creating ways to, for people to influence and be part of the decision-making. So I wanted to make sure to make that distinction. We provide a lot of ways for our community and our stakeholders to get, stakeholders to get involved. So one of the things that I wanted to draw attention to is the LSR7 Process Action Team Model, which is part of our continuous improvement process. Essentially, it's collaborative teams that come together to tackle issues and topics of interest in LSR7. There can be different forms of them, like our internal process action teams, which are called PRATs for short, and they can tackle things like staffing, middle school programming or curriculum. And then, of course, we have our larger, more expansive process action teams that incorporate the community, things like our middle school boundaries work, middle school naming, our CSIP, and our Literacy and Dyslexia Quality Focus Team. And then, of course, we also just provide opportunities for our community to give us feedback as we make decisions. So on the right, you can see examples of feedback groups, some of which some of the other speakers tonight have spoken about, in ways we've collected information. New to LSR7 this year is a newly-formed teacher advisory committee. They come together to inform Dr. Buck on topics of importance. Our new three student advisory committees to the superintendent, a new administrator roundtable, and then, of course, in Shannon Booth's division, lots of collaborative work with the community around career education advisory teams. And that information we collect and those feedback opportunities have led to action steps in the area of outreach. We are looking at different We are looking at different ways to engage with our community this year. Going back to the CSIP about trying to find ways of virtual engagement, exploring a virtual speaker series for our spring semester. Of course, igniting some of those internal advisory groups. Continuing to grow and expand legislative relationships and providing marketing support for new initiatives like our D-Teams. And finally, excellent customer service, which has been a real point of focus for the PR team this year. We are moving to two models in two important areas starting next semester. When we come back from winter break on January 31st, 2022, the plan is to launch new school websites for a majority of the district. They will be accessible, visually appealing, easy to navigate. And that's been a collaborative process that has gone, been underway really since April. We also are moving to a more comprehensive flyer management system, which will allow our community to share information about events and initiatives going on in the community directly to parents' inboxes. Peachjar is going to be the provider for that. It's an external, external vendor that a lot of districts in our area use. And finally, I just wanted to touch on a couple of fun things that are associated with our climb, peak priorities with our CSIP. We have our Sum It Up podcast where we have really focused on real-world learning episodes that are produced by Shannon Booth's team. And so you can find Sum It Up on our Apple or Spotify platforms. We have our advisory team. So pictured here is Dr. Buck's student superintendent advisory group from Lee Summit High School, and then some pictures from our citizens advisory team, our group meeting, one about equity and one about legislative issues. We have a great feature on the cover of our Our Schools magazine this year on Great Beginnings programming that I wouldn't want you to miss. Our district photographer, Rebecca Hange, has been doing a scene around our seven photo series that we share on social media, just trying to capture those happy, normal moments as we know we continue to navigate a somewhat tumultuous year at times. And then we have been pushing out learning resources for our Heritage and Diversity Months, for the most part on the first of each month as we celebrate different cultures and heritages that are associated with federal holidays. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much to all three of you. I know that's a lot of information for people, so, but we do appreciate it as we've moved to the quarterly updates. So if there's any quick comments, I mean, we could do that real quick here before we do presentations. Board Member Fritchy?
Thank you. I'll try to keep it quick. I have a couple of questions for Dr. Berger. In part of your presentation on Priority One, Dr. Berger, you said there is a review team that has reviewed advanced studies courses at the middle school level and is developing a plan. Will we be receiving a report on that plan or that proposal?
Yep, absolutely. Dr. Potts actually is facilitating that with a small group. And some of the conversation is, what does that begin looking like? And when does it begin looking like? With the intention of not impacting people who are currently enrolled in that course pattern, but anything potentially, any changes potentially coming, being phased in. But I don't know that that has been developed out into a proposal yet to be ready to be brought forward.
Okay, because, yeah, I'm hearing rumblings from some folks in the community who are worried about advanced study courses going away.
So I think that that may be a possibility as part of the conversation, but I think what's important to know is that won't, won't-go-away is an ability for our students who are advanced students to access advanced opportunities. So we may be looking at how that looks differently for groups of students, whether that is a different section or course number, or whether there are different opportunities within a given course.
Okay, thanks. That's good to know. Just another quick question. I, I listened to you say that there was a Panorama Staff Survey in the fall of 2021. Have we received any input or information on that yet? Do you remember?
I'm not sure that we have pulled that together, but that's it easy enough, Paul. I'll have Dr. Hall work, he'll work on that and bring it into an update. It was the first year that we asked staff to take the survey for the purpose of being able to, say triangulate, although it's just two sources, to be able to, to compare our student perception data and our teacher perception data, right? So that we can have some understanding about where there might be gaps in understanding. But the other nice thing about our Panorama Staff Survey is that it also asks our staff to be reflective about their workspace and how comfortable they feel as well as the adult. So we can certainly get that together for you.
Very good. Thank you.
Board Member Campbell?
I think I just wanted to share congratulations and thank you first. This is an incredible amount of progress reported and, and work in motion and work completed. So thank you for identifying all those. I did kind of notice as you were going through that there are some future timelines and targets, and I appreciated those being speaking points. But it might be helpful for, thank you for the slides. It might be helpful to have some of those maybe bullet timeline dates that are tied to certain things. And if you want to tell me where to go look for it, I can. Or if maybe we could just get those as well, that'd be really helpful.
Absolutely. When we send the comprehensive breakdown of the first semester, what we can do is pair that with sort of an upcoming or what to expect, and we can just do a little burp like that.
That's great. Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate you all very much. We're gonna move on to Presentations and Recognition. So we're gonna start with 3.01. This is our school spotlight on Longview Farm Elementary. I do admit to being a little biased with this one, so we will turn it over to Principal Hassler.
Good evening. I'm Kim Hassler. I'm the principal at Longview Farm Elementary. This is Katie Whaley, and she's our Assistant Principal. Our goal tonight is to introduce you to the mission of Longview Farm Elementary, its leaders in excellence and service. Because it is the season of a giving heart, our students are gonna briefly describe some of the service projects that we strive to accomplish every year to honor the Long family's legacy. I asked fifth and sixth graders, because our efforts have been limited the last two years due to you-know-what. And most of these students have experienced some of these generous projects. I also asked older students, because this will be the final year of elementary school for all of them, PLMS will be the lucky ones next year to get these student leaders. Let me begin by introducing Drew Dickstein.
Every year on Martin Luther King Day in January, our PTA sponsors a Martin Luther King Day of Service. They arrange for parents, guardians, and students to volunteer, make items, and deliver items. When COVID prevented this day to a current person, the PTA adjusted and created an Amazon wishlist, and the board members then distributed the goods to the nonprofit organizations, some of the nonprofit organizations that our LFE community has supported. Wayside Wafes, John Knox Village, Lair's Foster Socks, Foster Connect, Unleashed, Children's Mercy Hospital, Hillcrisp Transitional Housing, Harvesters, Handmade Cards for Hospitals, and Operation Gratitude.
Next is Isaac Murdock.
Our archery team consists of fourth and fifth graders led by Mr. Kedman and parent volunteer coaches. Under the National Archery in the Schools program, our students learn how to use archery to encourage focus, discipline, and teamwork. The Stallion Archery Team competes in tournaments throughout the region, but our favorite is the one that we host. In April, we hosted a charity tournament for all elementary archers in the Lee Summit School District. The money collected to enter this tournament is not used to support LFE or the archery program. Instead, all proceeds and donations go to St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital.
Each year, for two weeks before the Super Bowl, nutrition services through the Student-Led Nutrition Council sponsors a food drive with the Social Services in Lee Summit. Our students really enjoy when we currently hold the record for the number of canned goods and non-perishable items picked up from one school. It also helps on the chief's tournament.
Stallion ambassadors are fifth and sixth graders chosen by their peers and teachers. They represent the student body and decision-making in their organization. They host a school store daily for those needing school supplies. Every year, they sponsor Dollars for Dreams. Money is raised throughout the school for a few weeks to sponsor families in need for the holidays. Then they take the funds raised along with the wish lists provided by Coldwater to go shopping for their families. This year, we sponsored 12 families. It is a great way to help those in our community.
Drew got chosen twice, so he gets to go again.
Our third graders strive to inspire young leaders with one of our partners in education businesses, Godard School, across the street from LFE. Once a month, the third graders go to read to students and do an activity with them. The students enjoy getting to know the preschoolers and helping them grow as learners.
Every year, our fifth grader sponsors lemonade stands at the conclusion of the economics unit. In class, they design their stand with their group and decide on how to market and sell their lemonade. The goal for each stand is to pay off their loan and make a profit. We have a lot of fun, but learn that you may need incentives for people to purchase your lemonade rather than from another group. We appreciated McDonald's on Third Street. They made generous donations of cups, lids, and straws. Our goal is to raise money for the Casey Pet Project in honor of Lululeong's love for animals. Last year, our class raised the most money of the classes so far. We raised $1,021.
Our sixth graders serve our school through community service. They have planted, watered, and taken care of plants in the courtyard. They set up the courtyard daily for classes to participate in learning in the outdoor environment. They work in teams to do all of the school's recycling collection. They work with Mr. Jordan to safely get to the larger recycling bin outside. Other jobs may include delivering water bottles to bus drivers in the hot weather or helping in the car rider lane. They look forward, they look forward to the time when they can return to Harvesters to provide volunteer labor and time to help those in the greater Kansas City community. The Long family helped those that lived on the farm, and as the oldest students at LFE, we want to help those that we are with daily.
Living out some of the Long family traditions of caring and compassion is incorporated throughout our school. Our staff sets an example for the students. Each year, a charity is chosen to support. The Ronald McDonald House has been the recipient of their generosity a few times. The teachers created cards and bags for the families staying at the Ronald McDonald House. They have provided meals and needed supplies, too. They have also prepared gift baskets for families in need at Lee Summit Social Services during the holidays.
Every year, Mr. Kedman organizes a time for the staff to sing and ring bells for Salvation Army. As a matter of fact, they were at Hy-Vee just this week. This year, staff members supported a colleague going through cancer treatments. The staff know it as important for the students to see how they support each other. Each Monday in October, they all wore shirts that said, "Her fight is our fight." They organized a meal train and took on whatever was needed to support her. Not only are we helping the community, we take care of our own.
As you can see, the Long family legacy lives on through our staff, students, and our school community. We're dedicated to teaching and demonstrating the traits like honesty, charity, respect, and kindness, and a dedication to helping those around us, just like the Long family. Thank you very much.
Sorry about that. Okay. Nicely done, LFE. I'm sure I'll hear about it here in a couple hours. All right, so 3.02, we are gonna move on to our Economic Development Council presentation. That's gonna be done with Rick McDowell and Tina Chase. So, Mr. McDowell, we will turn it over to you, sir.
Well, I'm not sure I want to follow that. I am Rick McDowell, President and CEO of the Lee Summit Economic Development Council. What I want to do tonight, I'm gonna be brief and then turn it over to Tina and talk about a little bit more of the issues I'll be working with at the school system directly. Just for everyone, so everyone knows, this is our, thank you for allowing me to be here. This is our annual event that we come in and discuss what we're going, what we're doing within the economic development efforts in Lee Summit. For those of you who don't know, I'll just go briefly over some of this. We are the Economic Development Council. We are a nonprofit and a private-public sector partnership. It's devoted to the businesses and our community and growing it. It is driven by a local board, and that board is made up of three standing members, and that is the mayor, the city manager, and the superintendent of schools of our seven schools. And then in addition to that, we have 14 regional and local business leaders. And they are typically the executor, the CEOs of these companies that are part of our board. So it is a very powerful board at that point and very involved in our community. Then it's all supported by our staff, who, again, I'm the CEO, and then we have Tina that will be here, and then we have two other members that are part of our organization. Let me get into a little bit of what's going on and what are, what we do. We, we have four standing options that we work with. Attraction of new business, retention of existing businesses, and expansion of those existing businesses, and workforce development initiatives. Before I get to the last one, the last one is actually marketing communications of the community. But the workforce development initiative is something that we can't do any of this without having the workforce development as part of that. If you do not have an existing workforce or workforce of the future, we cannot attract or can our local businesses expand. So this is a very important part of our process, has become an important leg to what we do. Next, I'm gonna get into kind of what we've done. I don't want to get into the numbers too much, but just to give you what the year was like, which has been very unusual, and most people don't realize what has happened. This past year, I'll look at the numbers. Potential projects, we had 26, but the biggest thing is that we had eight existing expansion projects, which basically means if your local businesses are expanding, things are going well for you locally. And we have eight of those. Of those eight, six of them are industrial and manufacturing. And so with that, that also includes big investments. They're buying new equipment and creating new jobs. So this has been an unusual year. This is actually, I've been here eight years. This is the largest number I've had in one single year since we've been here, which in a pandemic, it's kind of hard to imagine. But the industrial market right now is growing, and it continues to grow. Kansas City is a hot market right now. So we continue to see that, and we think that's gonna be something in the future. And speaking of the future, you can see what I have listed here. We're getting ready to get into our Economic Development Strategic Plan, which is a three-to-five-year plan for the city, not just for our organization, but the entire city. So that's gonna come forward here, starting here in the near future, and actually just after the first of the year. So that's gonna be something good news for us. In addition, we are, part of that is gonna be a targeted industry analysis. We need to know what fits here and what will work here, based on our workforce, our demographics, and our transportation system. We currently have eight that are on our target list. Well, that's a very large approach. We're looking to narrow that down to what are we best at? What are our top four? So with this analysis and with this industry review, we'll come up with that list here coming forward, and I'll be able to present that to you, if not mid-year or late next year. The other thing that's interesting, and you'll see this on your spec buildings. Those that have seen me speak before, I talk about if you don't have an existing building, it's very hard to attract an industrial client. Other communities have speculative buildings. Basically, what they are is a shell of a building, and they're able to attract those people. It is the most expensive marketing tool you can have, but it is the best marketing tool you can have. About 80% of our projects are looking for existing businesses, or existing buildings. If you don't have it, you're not in the game. So we're fortunate that we have a company that's coming before City Council in next week, and they're looking to get approval to build 800,000 square feet of speculative buildings. They're gonna do that, we're gonna do that with three separate buildings, and it's gonna be, they're going to do that continuously. They're gonna put them up and start the second one as soon as they get it up. So we feel this is gonna be effective for us. These are industrial buildings that's gonna attract industrial and warehouse-type clients. These are people that spend big money on their property with all their personal property, machinery and equipment. So we're pretty excited about that. In addition to, we have the Downtown Marketplace. Again, it's gonna drive more people downtown, people to come here, spend additional funding, funds. Paragon Star is gonna go online, to come online this year. Again, that is the big athletic facility, and it will continue to bring people Again, that is the big athletic facility, and it will continue to bring people into our area and to our town. And last but not least, is Drake Development. Most of you are aware, probably not by Drake Development, but basically where you see First Watch and all of those, everything going there, that's Drake Development. Well, they have now purchased another piece of ground in Lee Summit, and they're going to be doing something very similar out on Fifty and Two-Ninety-One. So we have a lot of growth happening here going forward, looking forward to next year, and we hope that will continue. That is all I have. I will say this. This partnership that we have with this LSR Seven is important to us. It's important to the community and is important to our future. We are the envy of many economic development agencies around the region and the nation. We could constantly get calls and ask about, "How did you develop this? How is this working?" You guys are one of the leaders in this. So thank you. We're glad that you're a part of it, and we appreciate that. I'm going to turn it over to Tina and let her talk about more of what the workforce development has been.
All right. Thanks for having me. Appreciate being here and sharing this information with you. It's been a great year. We've done a lot of things, but I know that you have requested a little bit of data, so I'm trying to deliver that to you. So our office tracks interactions or what we call assists. It's similar to what you would kind of see as a standard CRM, customer relationship management model, so it's the amount of times that we interact with someone. And note, these numbers here are really a count of the amount of times for the interactions, but not the time spent on the request. That could be a quick phone call, or one could be multiple hours spent on a particular project working with somebody. So these numbers that you see here are for the last five years, specifically working with LSR Seven staff. You can see from 2017 to 2021. It's kind of fluid, but I'd like to call out the difference between this year and maybe five years ago. So there's been a thirty-seven percent increase in the amount of times and interactions that we're working with you and staff members. I would say the intention of those have been a little bit more honed in on the projects that we're working on with you as well. So it's not just about the amount of times, but it's about the quality of the amount of times that we're working together. In addition, I included some overall data for you as a perspective. So again, this is the amount of time spent directly related to the things that the EDC focuses on. So the BRE stands for Business Retention and Expansion, and those are specific visits, or one-on-one visits with our local businesses. Business assists are kind of what it sounds like. If a business reaches out to me and says, "Hey, I'm having issues with a traffic stop or a light on the corner, I'm going to reach out to the city, and we're going to make a connection and see what we can do to fix that." So a business assist is a barrier that they're having that they need help with. Education assist is when someone from the education system, and it could be more than just R Seven, it could be Summit Christian Academy, it could be one of our secondary education partners, would reach out wanting us to communicate to our businesses new programs, or maybe they want businesses to participate in certain programs that they are offering. We will connect them to the right businesses for that. And then, of course, prospects and membership, which is, we're a nonprofit, so we are constantly seeking for partnerships and individual membership base. I'd like to just highlight that even over the last five years, we've stayed pretty consistent with the amount of engagement with you. But you'll notice that, you know, our time spent is directly related to the economy. So the one-on-one business visits have reduced significantly with COVID, but the amount of assists that they need help with things have dramatically increased. So while I'd like to say that I spend all my time with R Seven, I really don't. And it has been a very busy year with our businesses. The next four slides, I will just kind of skim over, but I'd like to call out that this is really just a highlight of some of the things and the ways that we've interacted together. And I've separated them kind of by page, and I'd like to kind of call out that there is testimonials on the bottom of every page for the interactions. So with Dr. Buck, Rick and I do quarterly meetings with Dr. Buck just to make sure that we're on the same page and that we're focused on our goals. We participated in a day-long learning retreat with Kaufman Foundation, which was, in my opinion, really engaging for us to be there together and to really hear examples from across the region and the other school districts and how they're implementing some of these programs. And, you know, I'd like to say we're kind of ahead of the game. So we've had a lot of inquiries about how we're doing this and why we're being so successful. So that's really a great thing. So the next one is my interactions with Ms. Shannon Booth. And we, like I stated, have been very busy. We've been making presentations to community groups just to be sure that they understand the partnership that we have together as well as, you know, what we're asking from them. So we want support for our Diploma Plus program and the interactions with students with a real-world learning initiative. We did record a separate podcast so that we could share that out on social media. The two things that I'd like to really highlight on are the coordination with the R Seven Community Partnership Breakfast. So most of you were in attendance for that. And we, Shannon utilized LSEDC to really communicate this breakfast out to the business community. So we shared it with about two-hundred-and-sixty individuals, different individual businesses, as well as I coordinated with the chamber to, for them to share this information. I don't know the number of people that they did, but they have over a thousand members, so we could even assume five hundred just to be safe. And then Downtown Main Street also shared with their merchants as well. I know there was a time there where we were not certain if we were going to fill all the seats for that. So I personally sent out sixty one-on-one emails to businesses and kind of pushing them to why they needed to be there. So if you can imagine, like I just mentioned, businesses are very busy right now. They're kind of preoccupied with other things, so they need that extra push sometimes to really understand why they need to be spending time with us. In addition to that, the other highlighted success, in my opinion, is the career pathway advisory meetings. So Shannon and I have been very specific and intentional with that. I believe prior to EDC's involvement, it was pretty much the same cookie cutter every year, and we sat down and said, you know, "Let's be very intentional about this." I can tell you, we probably encouraged and engaged with a hundred-and-forty-five different businesses to participate in that. And really, this is really more about quality over quantity, like I stated earlier. So it's about really being intentional with our time and the people that we have engaged with us. Working with the industrial tech and the CTE department has kind of been a passion of mine for the skilled trades and been an initiative. I work a lot with Mr. Jeff Buckner. He's really a great guy, I'm sure you know him. And he's very, very passionate about what he does and creating opportunities for students to understand that college is not the only pathway and that the trades are a very viable way to make a sustainable living. And we believe that as well, especially with the industrial tech that we see being high demand and the spec buildings that are coming on and the expansions that we're seeing here locally. We need to be sure that we are communicating that to our students. So we kind of doubled down. We've been doing National Manufacturing Day coordination and tours since 2017, 2018. In the beginning, we just worked with you and just had classes sign up to participate. Jeff and I have really kind of tried to hone in on the students that are participating in those types of classes and encouraging them to participate so that it is a bigger return on our businesses to potentially get employees or get the right kinds of kids that are going to be interested. Because at the end of the day, we want them to go through the trade, possibly get the trade paid for, the schooling paid for, and then come back here, live and work, right? So that's really important to us. So we participated in National Manufacturing Day, but it really kind of spurred three different other possible initiatives for the district and for the CTE department. So RND Leverages, a local manufacturing company, and they, at the last minute, had to pull out of the tour. But what happened was they really still wanted to highlight their business to students. And so I believe they're working on a project, a drone video project, in order to be able to, they're utilizing some of the students here to do that project, and then they're going to share it with all of the students that are doing the CTE-type program. And they're really ready to continue doing projects with that department. But my favorite thing is JCI Industries. It's also a local company here, and they have really doubled down on their commitment to work with the district. They're going to be a continued regular partner, bringing students into their business, but also going into the classroom to showcase some real-world, hands-on stuff. And we are working with them and the Department of Labor to establish a youth apprenticeship program specifically and only for LSR Seven students. So that's very exciting. The next thing is we, so since I've been here, and I've been here almost seven years, I have always worked with Dr. Bonnison and STA and MIC because it is a nationally recognized model, and it is something that we often get asked about, the students there. So this year, we really worked with Dr. Bonnison and the Aerospace Academy to, since it's the newest program that they offer. I was fortunate enough to be kind of part of that process with him, and we believe that this is going to really bring business here as well as just be something very unique for this region. There's nothing like this currently in our area, so we're very excited for Lee Summit to be kind of put on the map, if you will, in addition to the current programs that they're doing. The, we also worked pretty heavily with the Summit International Studies Academy. So we're great partners with them, and we enjoy seeing those students and all the amazing things that they're doing in that program. So the last thing I'd like to share with you, and this is something that kind of has been a little baby of mine. The kickoff was the Lee Summit Workforce Alliance in October. This is really designed to create like mutually beneficial business and education partnerships. So it is comprised of, at this time, about a hundred-and-fifty people, and it is structured with a co-chair who represents business and a co-chair that represents education. It is exclusively, well, I shouldn't say exclusively. We do have a lot of members, business members, that are outside of Lee Summit. So it is a regional pool. It starts with our membership base, so we are very regional. And it's going to create an avenue for many different types of conversations and partnerships and great project work. It's a synergy. More importantly, so it's really very needed for the business community to tackle these workforce challenges right now. But for R Seven, it's important because it really allows a platform specifically for Shannon and her department to be able to really network with these businesses and create the relationships to continue to move the program forward. Because at the end of the day, business really is about relationships. And right now, you're seeing a lot of shift in employees, change in employees in these companies. So you're consistently having to make new relationships with new people all the time. So creating an avenue for R Seven to do that on a regular basis without just Shannon and I, the Tina and Shannon Show, we call it, trying to do this all together by ourselves, this will create a larger avenue for that to take place. In addition, Shannon has accepted a position to be on the Executive Committee for 2022. So she'll be there to actually implement some of these initiatives, which will also be youth career exposure opportunities. And with that, if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer any questions for you.
Thank you both for being here tonight. Obviously, we really appreciate it and the partnership that we have. Is there any comments or questions? Board Member Fritchy?
Just one. I think tonight, we need to recognize Tina Chase for all of her good work with Economic Development Council. She has been invaluable. I think you've seen through all of her discussion tonight, all of the work that Economic Development Council has done. But Tina has worked so closely with the school district, and she is getting her own, her own directorship. I thought that's what you call it. Where is that?
Yes, so I've accepted a position for, as the Executive Director for Platte County, EDC. So I will be starting there in January.
So we will be losing Tina, and I think we all need to say thank you to Tina tonight for all she's done for us.
Board Member Campbell?
Just want to reiterate the thank you. I think it's just so important, the relationship that you all have established. Appreciate that partnership because that's so critical to so much of the work that we're doing in the district around project-based learning, around career opportunities, around things outside of just college-bound, but what are those career pathways that students can look at? So I just want to thank you all and appreciate the partnership that we have together.
Appreciate the comment. Anybody else? All right, thank you both very much. We appreciate you being here. We're going to move on to item 3.03. This is our Lee Summit High School project update. And so we are going to ask Mike, who is here tonight. Good evening, sir.
I'm going to have Eli Murdock present today.
Okay, that's fine. He might do it, actually, so he does love to talk, so.
So first update, ten-nothing Chiefs. So second update...
I was taping the game, just so you know. So thanks, appreciate that.
Hey, first quarter, you got plenty of... Second update, Mason Elementary, just real quick. Got their C of O, Certificate of Occupancy, yesterday. So they are officially out of construction there and occupying that whole building. So just want to give you that quick update. Okay, Lee Summit High School. The colored-up plan here, you see, if you look at the red, that is, just to get bearings, the bottom there would be Fifty Highway, and then up the right-hand side would be Two-Ninety-One. The red is the addition Phase One. So that is really taking shape right now. You can see that as you drive by. You can see that building skin going up. We'll have some of that picture later. And then the purple is what we call Area J, but that's part of the A building. We're finishing up the science wings on that first floor and then finishing up those classrooms on that second floor. So this is Level Three of that area. This is going to be more of that standard classroom space. This is where we used to have that computer lab area. You now have some classroom space there. It'll look very similar to what we turned over on that other side after the summer. And you can see right now, this is second floor, that science wing, that is changing a lot every day. By the middle of next week, that will have all the finishes in place, and that will be punching out so that they can move in over Christmas break, and then they'll be occupying all the science rooms starting next semester. So what you can see here, which is, has changed a lot from the time we turned this photo in, but you've got windows in on that, on this side right here, on this L. You've got windows in there. They're finishing up and putting in a masonry wall and some windows here on the top part. They're finishing up and putting in a masonry wall and some windows here on the top part. And then inside, they're building out all the case work and the countertops and the sinks. All those are in. Now they're putting floors down, and then they'll finish out that corridor next week. So the addition that I talked about, this is a shot of the addition looking from the parking lot down in the bottom here. So you can see that black is that vapor barrier that'll be going across, and that'll be underneath the metal panels that'll be going on there. So you'll start to see those clips going in, and that starts to take shape here in the next couple of months. Inside, a lot of interior roughing, most of the interior roughing down on the second floor is complete, or that first floor is complete. And then the second floor, they're heavy in that interior roughing. You can barely see, there's a, when we finish this out, right in the corner of that picture, you can see that that's going to be a really large staircase. It's going to be really nice when you're walking down that main hallway. And that's going to be nice, open space that goes off into the counseling on the first floor and then the administration on the second, so. So that'll be really nice when that finishes out. You can see some of the wall framing going on, shaping up those rooms. More of that exterior on the, on this picture right here. And then this is just again, another shot of what that will look like. So addition Phase One, this is where we're at right now. And then once we turn that over at semester, we're going to start doing addition Phase Two, which will go, when they go out the cafeteria, now they'll actually go over where they walk out for the cafeteria, and then that'll be that connection into the B building. And then you'll have this nice green space that goes underneath there. So that'll be what it'll look like. Just another picture of an entrance there. And so what we're taking next, this is current photos of what Area B looks like. So we're going to be taking that basement and that first floor, a big part of that first floor, right in here to this courtyard, this area right here. So when we come back from break, when the students come back from break, we will be having this space taken over, and we'll start renovating it. The renovation continues to march forward. And as always, you can stay up to date with this website right here. We post our monthly updates on there. And you are welcome to come onto that website and check that out anytime you want. And also let me know when y'all want to go for a walk. And we can do that at Mason Early Summit, so. Any questions?
Well, I know that there were people who are excited about getting, back over to Mason now that we're able to occupy it, so I think that that will be definitely on the agenda. So I appreciate you giving us that update. Any comments or questions? Board Member Hedrick?
Yeah, I just want to say, I was over at, by the campus the other day. And your picture in the red here, where that red part doesn't do it justice as to the extent and how huge that project is just on that one part of the building. So I really appreciate all the work that's going on to make improvements at that facility. It's going to look awesome. I know that it's going to be painful getting there for everyone, but it's going to look great. So I just continue to appreciate all the work that's being done.
Thank you, thank you.
Board Member Allen?
Yep, hello, Michael Childs. So time-wise, we're on track, everything's moving along.
Yes, we're on track to move into that, that J area. They're going to move into there over Christmas break. And then we're going to take the Area B renovation, which is this part up here. And then this addition one is going to finish at the end of the school year. And then we will move into addition Phase Two.
Which is then Fall of '23, finishing in the Fall of '23, is that the plan?
Well, the whole thing will finish in '23. That addition won't go quite that long.
Okay. Judy nailed it. I think there's some pain in, while you're flying, right? You're building while flying the plane, but keeping the eye on the prize, right? Yeah, it's a big deal. It's tough. I walked through it with Dr. Harrison recently, and it's a struggle. But just trying to keep the ball moving forward and the conversation as positive as possible.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. I'm glad we're moving along.
Okay, thank you for your time. I won't see you before March 5th, so mark your calendar. Because that is the taste of Lee Summit. That will finally be live again. So while I have everybody, please mark your calendar for March 5th. And that, that is all. Go Chiefs.
There we go. Hey, and now, Kim, that took up some of your board report. So there you go, all right? Thank you. We really kind of double dipped there. Excellent. Okay, thank you for the update, appreciate it. We're going to move on to item four. This is our public comments, 4.01. So I will ask Board Member Hedrick to go over our ground rules, please.
We appreciate your attendance and your willingness to speak to the board. Please remember that while this is a public meeting, this is, this part of the meeting does not contemplate a conversation between speakers and board members. The board does not respond to public comments during the meeting, but may ask clarifying questions. Your comments will be noted by the board, and if appropriate, we will direct the subject to the administrators who are responsible for that particular subject matter. Pursuant to Board Policy BDDH, we will be limiting all comments to no more than 10 people with a limit of three minutes each. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen. Please conclude your comments when the timer expires. Only those who have signed up prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. Please refrain from using the names of any students, staff, in your remarks. Remain respectful and ensure your comments pertain to district operations. We also ask all audience members to remain respectful. Lastly, when your name is called, please go to the podium and clearly state your name and the organization you represent, if any.
Thank you, Board Member Hedrick. We do have a full slate at least listed right now. If I mispronounce a name, I apologize. And I'll always give who's next up, essentially, so who's in the on-deck circle. So we're going to start with La Triviat Grant. So, and it'll be at that podium right there, uh-huh. And then after, the second speaker is Greg Kotny.
Yes, my name is La Triviat Grant. I live in Meadows of Winterset, so my sons attend Longview Farms Elementary. It just came up. And my concern is the mask mandate, which I'm sure is a hot topic. With the, with the new variant out, is it possible to extend the mask mandate longer?
We don't interact, we don't actually interact with the comments, so if you just want to share what your opinion is one way or the other, okay?
Okay, I'm new at this, I don't know. I'm an anti-mask, anti-vaccine to the extreme. And I'm just a voice for my boys. You know, they, they don't like wearing masks. They, they don't, they don't feel like the schools as enjoyable and free as it used to be. And so they find themselves kind of in a pickle because they don't, they have to be polite. They have to follow the rules. But when they come home, I can tell they're kind of anxious, kind of, you know, distraught. So my thing is try to figure a way to make them feel free at home. So I, you know, kind of let them just say whatever they want and just do whatever they want, just so they can feel free again. But my thing is, the mask mandate, it's been going on for a while. And with all the vaccines and with all the boosters, and I feel like kids should have a choice. You know, I feel like only one person should wear a mask if they're, if they're feeling like vulnerable or they might get COVID, then let them wear a mask. I don't, two people wearing a mask is, doesn't, to me, doesn't make sense. But I feel like if parents want their kids to wear masks and the kids want to wear masks, let them wear masks. But let it be up to the kids to choose. I mean, we're taking their choice, we're taking their voice away when we make them wear masks. And now with the vaccine mandates, are we going to take their, that choice away from them so they can go to school? I mean, when is it going to stop? I mean, I'm always going to be pro-choice. You know, if somebody wants to get a vaccine, fine. If they don't, fine. But to force it upon children that have these free spirits and to see them just lose that free spirit because of the mask. I mean, people think it's not a big deal. It is a big deal. You're taking, you're taking away expression. And I feel like kids need that. They need to smile at each other. They need to express themselves to each other. And when you take that away, you take, you take, you take that light, the joy. And I'm just emotional about it because it makes me so upset. And I can't do anything about it. I can't stop the schools from requiring it. So I've found another way by getting, I've started a tattoo sleeve. My guilt for sending my boys to school every day with a mask on their face has caused me to need an outlet, a release. So I've started a sleeve and, get it, three minutes? Well, but that's just my, my expression.
Appreciate the comment. Greg Kotny. And then Seth Donaldson. Just for all public speakers, please make sure you're speaking into the mic so that it's picked up for the whole room.
My name's Greg Kotny, and I'm representing my 13 grandchildren, one of which has already gone through the school system, and the rest are either in it now or to be there. So I'd like to speak about vaccine mandates for children and informed consent. To get ahead of a possible vaccine mandate in Lee Summit schools, I hope you consider the following. Why does the CDC want to vaccinate children knowing that in-school transmission of COVID to other kids or adults is rare due to the development of their ACE2 receptors? They're six times more likely to get myocarditis from the vaccine than they are to get COVID. 28 to 50 children are expected to die from COVID, but 5,000 to 10,000 are expected to get myocarditis. A June study has showed the 42% of the children already have natural immunity anyway, and by now is likely 60 to 70%. Why have the 1.8 million children in Sweden where they have no lockdowns, no masks, no vaccine mandates, also have no deaths? Why do we not take into consideration the average age of COVID morbidity is 80 with at least three, I'm sorry, COVID mortality is 80 with at least three comorbidities, mostly morbid obesity? Why does the CDC state, and I quote, "No serious adverse events were considered by the FDA as possibly related to a vaccine", when two months prior to this, when they authorized the emergency use authorization, their own Center for Biologics, Experiments, and Research gave a presentation where they listed 22 adverse events on Slide 16 that included miscarriages, multiple sclerosis, blood clots, myocarditis, and death? Why did more people die in Pfizer's clinical trials within the vaccinated group versus the unvaccinated? Why do they not explain a 95% relative reduction rate is only 1% better than the 94% of the control group? Why did they increase the magnification of the PCR test by 60% over the standard test resulting in a 97% false positive rate? How do they explain the states with the highest vaccination rates have the highest rates of new cases? How do they explain that the average deaths from the flu of 36,000 a year dropped to 600 last season, a reduction of 98.3%? That's called rebranding. As hard as it is to get an exemption to the vaccine so you can carry on with your profession and provide for your family, ponder the following. The FDA has 18,062 exemptions, the UN 36,000, Pfizer 78,500 exemptions, Johnson &amp; Johnson 134,500, and the United States Postal Service 495,941 exemptions to getting the vaccine. Although much of this data was from the website of the CDC, the NIH, and the FDA, it has been known to be removed without notice, especially Slide 16 with the 22 adverse events. Vaccinating your children is a decision that only parents should make after informed consent without coercion by the federal government or any group that doesn't understand the concept of we, the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Seth Donaldson, and then Heather Eslick.
Hi, my name's Seth Donaldson. I'm a parent in the school district. COVID continues to take a lot away from us, and it's time to give our kids everything that they deserve again, including a normal school day. Ironically, this board continues to discuss equity and equity policies while having a mask mandate that discriminates against the youngest of children in this district. I find it so unfair that I can stand here tonight without a mask, but my child wore one for eight hours today. This board's actions are now also under question from the Attorney General of Missouri and may be considered unlawful. In his most recent response on December 14th, the Attorney General states masking should be left to parents. He also makes a strong argument against considering exposures a measure of COVID transmission. At the last meeting, we discussed exposures and quarantines to a great extent, and it's not the same thing as having COVID. And it is an overexaggeration of COVID cases in this district. We've blindly followed Jackson County for this entire pandemic, but now we stand up to the state of Missouri. I wonder if the reaction would have been the same had the Attorney General ordered a mask mandate throughout the state. My child's never known a normal school year in this district. Last year, my daughter was recognized with the Character Trade Award, which would normally entail an assembly with parents in attendance. Instead, during virtual school last year, my daughter was recognized for about two minutes at the beginning of a class period and later given a certificate. We continue to miss these opportunities for assemblies, field trips, school parties, and more. We never will get these opportunities back, and it breaks my heart when something's unnecessarily taken away from my children and my family. We attend a large church here in Lee Summit with thousands of members, and masks are rarely seen at church. We attended a dance recital over the weekend at Lee Summit High School with 800 people packed into the auditorium and only a few masks in sight. The majority clearly agree that the mask mandate needs to go away forever and never come back. COVID will probably always be here. It's not Delta, it's Omicron, it's something different. It's always going to be something. We can't do this forever. Throughout this current school year, greater than 99.5% of our students and staff have remained COVID-free. On average, using that dashboard data, 47 students and staff have had COVID at any given time out of 21,000. I'd hardly consider that significant, especially considering that we have 25 schools and buildings, meanings that less than two cases per week per building are noted. The rationale for previously extending the mandate on our young children was to have, for them to have time to vaccinate. Come the turn of the new year, they'll have more than 60 days to have vaccinated children, and it's time to end the mask mandates forever. Let us have a choice, and let's end the mask mandate. It's time to move forward and control our own future. Thank you.
Heather Eslick, and then the next speaker will be Beth Corey.
Hello, my name is Heather Eslick, district parent and board member candidate. I'm here tonight to talk about the tensions in our school community and how we can better come together with respect in the common goal of providing our kids with the best education possible. On both sides of some major issues important to parents, there's one common theme, and it's passion. There's passion about masks, as you heard. Some parents watch their child struggle to progress academically and connect socially while wearing them. Some parents feel comforted by the presence of masks. There's passion about vaccines. Some parents are more afraid of unknown vaccine side effects than they are of the virus. Some parents are thankful and eager to provide this vaccine for their children. All of these passions are rooted in genuine concern for our children and staff, and I can empathize with all of it. At some point, we must return choice to parents, which is not the environment we're in today. Families should not be penalized with exclusions that differ based on vaccination status. Just a history lesson, it took 10 years for Missouri to require the chickenpox vaccine for school attendance, which oddly enough has a similar child mortality rate as COVID. Vaccines that have been through long-term testing should be implemented to protect our students and staff. Without that science, it should be the parent's decision without penalty. I know there are plenty of people who will disagree vehemently about mask and vaccine choice, but we have to find a way to once again respect people's decisions and allow them the chance to evaluate acceptable risk. As board members, your primary responsibility is to represent the school community. And that includes those who may not believe the way that you do or make choices like you would. Making clear your personal views of those who don't think like you through board meetings, news articles, and opinion pieces only inflames the divisiveness. These voices deserve acknowledgement and validation, not outright dismissal. If leadership is your goal, then I'll say this. Attitude reflects leadership. You can set the tone in your unique position of both power and responsibility. Be the empathy, the transparency, the genuine that you wish to see reflected back into the community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beth Corey, and then Kristen Grubbs.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm a Lee Summit alum and a parent of a child at Hazel Grove and with parents as teachers. Two quick notes of appreciation. I want to thank Shelley Sanders for your outreach to the whole LSR seven community as part of the D Team. I found it very exciting to be able to participate as a parent. And I thank the LSR seven Legal Council for the response to the Missouri Attorneys General. And I thank the LSR seven Legal Council for the response to the Missouri Attorney's General's attempt to impede our ability to keep staff and students safe. Speaking of that, I would implore the board to revisit mask mandates as part of the Safe Return Plan, specifically revisiting in January, considering the COVID dashboard numbers in the last two weeks. As a parent, I would also request clarification on the recent alert about volunteers and parents being allowed to return to buildings. I know I don't want an unvaccinated, unmasked outside adult in my child's classroom or working with them on one-on-one. So parents should be made clear on what choices they have in this change of policy. I also wholeheartedly, with every fiber of my being, support librarians and media specialists. To note, the Media Review Committee made a unanimous decision to retain the book All Boys Aren't Blue without restriction. I request that the board, when you vote today, to uphold that unanimous decision. Books have the power to relate experiences and views and knowledge that one might not otherwise be exposed to. Books, especially memoirs like this one, can seem shocking to some people. To others, like individuals who are not normally represented on bookshelves, in curriculum or in popular culture, these books can be a lifeline. When I read or hear people wanting to ban or restrict a book, they exude discomfort. But what is discomfort to one person when that book can be a supportive confirmation, a new outlook or learning for another person? I support parents having the ability to review books their children wants to read. The conversations they have or the restrictions they put on their own children's reading is their own business. Personally, I want and expect to be made uncomfortable by my children when they read books, study history or share their ideas. But out of discomfort comes understanding, emotion, connection, and I wouldn't ever want to be shielded from that. Please vote to uphold the committee's decision. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kristin Grubbs and then Marla Stout.
Hi, I'm Kristin Grubbs. My husband and I have four children in LSR seven. They have been blessed with excellent teachers and I often share this with others. However, since COVID, our district has changed dramatically. Our family values how our country was founded around our God-given freedom to choose how we live. We individually have the freedom to choose what we allow in our bodies. This does not only apply to medications or vaccinations, but also to information. We have the freedom to choose what we listen to and what we see. We have the freedom to think independently and choose how to respond. All this to point out that there is a disturbing pattern in our school board right now. The very people elected to make decisions regarding our schools have neglected to use the tools we teach our children. They are taught to treat each other equally, respect others' privacy, to tell an adult when they see something wrong, to respect authority and follow the rules. Sadly, our school board has not practiced these elementary lessons. COVID guidance approved by this very board created division among students and disrespected privacy when they allowed certain privileges to vaccinated students while restricting others. Students fingered as close contacts to a COVID-positive person are forced to quarantine regardless of their health and they're lucky if they get any instruction while they're gone. This board, though razor-focused on assessing the emotional state of our kids through panorama surveys regularly, seems to be ignoring the immediate impact mask mandates and quarantines have had on their well-being. We all have the freedom to choose how we live, including who we are intimate with. However, when the explicitly graphic details of intimate encounters appear on the shelves in our school libraries, we as parents have the God-given responsibility to reject such materials and protect our children from exposure. You have failed to respect this responsibility. Missouri Statute 573.04 defines material that's pornographic to minors as a material that, quote, "has a tendency to cater to or appeal to a purient interest of minors," end quote. No person in their right mind can tell me that the explicit literature contained in the contended books is not catering to the sexual curiosity of adolescents. Furnishing such materials to minors in the state of Missouri is a Class A misdemeanor. I strongly suggest that each of you look at the Missouri statute and read it carefully. You will find that, though protected by the First Amendment, it is illegal to supply these books to children. Lastly, this board, in its boldest move yet, flipped the metaphorical finger to the AG Schmidt after he sent a cease and desist letter to our district, congruent with the ruling out of the Cole County Circuit Court stating that by Missouri law, this district's COVID mandates are unconstitutional. According to, according to Missouri Administrative Procedure Act, only the Missouri Legislature can impose health mandates. And last I checked, none of you are serving in Jeff City. I strongly suggest that each of you consider the example you are setting for our children. You cannot expect obedience while repeatedly breaking the law.
Our next speaker is Marla Stout and then Jordan Cruz.
Hi, I'm Marla Stout and I'm a parent in the district. And actually, what I'm going to read tonight is from my student. My student is a part of the LGBTQ community and an officer of GSA here in Lee Summit. They were asked to come to the board to speak tonight, but because of their crazy high school schedules, they could not be here. So what my, because I don't want to conflict my comments with my students' comments, I'm going to say this. As a parent of a child in the LGBTQ community, it's not always easy. When you're a parent, you're expected to instill certain morals and values in your children. You're expected to guide them. You're expected to make them be the best person they can be. When your child comes out, sometimes you're in uncharted waters. I'm one of those parents that was in uncharted waters. I've got lots of friends that identify as gay. I've got transgender friends. I've got all of that. But never have I had a child that was gay. It's not always easy and it's not always something that you know how to do. I'm expected to be the expert on being a parent. However, my child is the expert on who they are and who they will become and what they want to read and how they get information about how others navigate their journey. So with that said, there's three comments in here that were from other students because my child did ask what censorship meant to them and I will not read their names. The first student, "The purposeful blockage of media from audiences." That's censorship. The second student says that their experience in censorship includes the inability to find books about the African-American experience, specifically Black women, in our libraries. The third student, "The suppression of information or ideas by group, individual or institution." This is my daughter. This is my child. Restricting access to books specifically in a school library can give the impression on minority children that the way they are is not enough. By censoring or banning books, this could, would, have ruinous effect on the school environment amongst students. It is crucial that we create a safe and healthy place for students to go to and for many kids, libraries are that. If you begin to exclude students from these spaces in a seemingly minor way, it will have a major effect on them. Thank you and happy.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jordan Cruz and I apologize if I mispronounced your last name.
It's Cruz.
Okay, and then Ava Wischnuski.
Hi, I'm a student in the LSR seven district and I'm here to discuss The All Boys Aren't Blue by George M. Johnson and Agenda Eight Point Zero Two, the book Appeal for All Boys Don't Wear Blue. Being in the community and having voices like this, being heard and having a voice in the community and being able to speak on behalf of this, I feel like the book is potentially being banned as a way to restrict the material students could view. And seeking this course of action, this censorship, you limit the adolescents from understanding different ideas and having a voice. Trying to protect children from inappropriate sexual content or offensive language does not change the error of this argument. Children can still learn behaviors and explore as they will. The Rights of a Reader by Daniel Penne states that a reader has a right not to read. The reader has a right to skip over pages and they even have the right to not finish the book. With this information, The All Boys Aren't Blue book states that, in the author's note, how Johnson wanted to tell their story. The good, the bad, the things they wanted, were always afraid to talk about publicly. Johnson also states how certain subjects and discussions are often kept away from teens for being of the fear of too heavy. With this in mind, the point I would like to get across is that within the author's note, they explained why they wrote the book, the reason why they talk about certain subjects and if you're not comfortable reading the book or parts of the novel, skip over it or don't read it at all. Typical books that cover this topic are considered too heavy, wrong or explicit. The parents that brought up this appeal for this book states that the book is pornography. The Mary Webster Dictionary defines pornography as "the deception of erotic behavior as in pictures or writing intended to cause sexual excitement." This book does not define the definition of porn. This book does not intend the definition of porn. As you know, board, as you reviewed the book, this book discusses subjects to educate like sexual assault, molestation, the loss of virginity, homophobia, racism and anti-blackness. Marking it as a pornography is a gross oversimplification of the overall novel to the point of it being false and completely disrupts the author's intention when writing this piece. Now, thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Ava Wischnuski and then our final speaker will be Lena Baker.
Hello, I am Ava Wischnuski, a junior at Lee Summit West and I will also be discussing All Boys Aren't Blue. I love our schools. I participate in seven clubs and activities. I'm a part of the IBCP program for political science and I have teachers that I know I can depend on. I am also a lesbian who came out in the eighth grade. When I was struggling with who I was and learning how to accept myself, I found refuge at the library and was able to find queer books that made me feel seen. The meaning of these books to younger me could not be understated. I mean, I could honestly start crying if I think too much about how much this meant and how much it gave me a place in a community. All Boys Aren't Blue, I can guarantee, has the same effect on every queer kid, especially young Black boys and sexual assault survivors who often aren't given any resources to deal with the emotional aftermath. It might carry even more meaning since it's not fiction, but someone's real life. Books like these save lives. When we feel alone, depression rears its ugly head. But imagine reading a book about someone who has felt the exact same struggles, had the exact same words used against them and survived. That's a reason to keep going. Queer youth, especially queer youth of color, have some of the highest suicide and depression rates. According to the Trevor Project, sixty-six percent of Black queer kids are seriously depressed, thirty-five percent have considered suicide and nineteen percent have attempted it. The pandemic has only made these numbers higher. I have seen the destruction suicide and depression causes firsthand and I believe that my school's first priority should be our students' mental health. Keeping books like All Boys Aren't Blue in our school libraries tells all queer students that this is a safe place, that they have people that will listen to them here and that they are not alone. Censorship is dangerous because it erases the truth of a reality we live in to create an alternative world that the majority wants it to be. Author of All Boys Aren't Blue, George M. Johnson. Please do not censor stories of gay people, Black people and survivors. We students deserve more than that. Thank you and I hope you take my words into consideration tonight.
Our final speaker is Lena Baker.
Thank you. My name is Lena Baker and I represent a concerned group of students at Lee Summit North High School. The challenge to All Boys Aren't Blue has distressed us. We support intellectual freedom and banning books in any capacity limits the dissemination of knowledge under the First Amendment. The United States Judicial Branch has long upheld intellectual freedom under the First Amendment and using the principle of stare decisis, it's clear that All Boys Aren't Blue should not be banned today. Case versus Unified School District Number Two Hundred and Thirty-three in nineteen ninety-five upheld that removing a book depicting a lesbian relationship violated the students' rights to receive information and the librarian's right to disseminate it under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. It became clear in the decision that the book was removed from shelves due to ideological differences, which limited the freedom of students to receive information. In the case of today's novel, All Boys Aren't Blue, there is no compelling evidence to suppress this book from the school libraries. All Boys Aren't Blue is not part of any curriculum and students must seek it out of their own volition. This means that each individual has the choice to read or not read the novel and are not forced to engage with the information against their will. Furthermore, the inclusion of books discussing queer stories is extremely important. Clause one of the American Library Association's Bill of Rights states that "Books and other library resources should be provided for the interest, information and enlightenment of all people of the community the library serves." Materials should not be excluded because of the origin, background or views of those contributing to their creation. This clearly demonstrates the value of including diverse perspectives on library shelves. Libraries should strive to provide a safe space for students to explore their identities and All Boys Aren't Blue illuminates the perspective of growing up as not only a queer person, but a person of color as well. The author of this book states that denying kids sex education, denying kids understanding around consent, understanding around topics of racism, topics of gender and topics of identity, it does nothing to help the student because the child still has to exist in a world where all those things exist. The entire purpose of George M. Johnson's memoir is to provide education about important topics to young adults. Our district's primary goal is to prepare each and every student for post-secondary success. If this truly is the goal of our school district, it's important to keep access to information about real-world problems and experiences available. If we limit access to these stories, then we are truly not preparing students for post-secondary success and banning this book clearly runs counter to that goal. Thus, we respectfully ask to retain All Boys Aren't Blue without restriction. Thank you.
Appreciate everyone who is here for public comment tonight. We appreciate your participation. We are going to move on to item five point zero one. So this is our Board Reports and Meetings Attended where we will give just a real brief summary of some of the different committees that most of us are serving, well, all of us are serving on. So we will start actually this month with Board Member Campbell and we'll just work right around here.
That sounds great. I attended the Finance Committee with Board Member Hedrick and so we'll have more information about that coming up. I also attended and supported Board Member Hedrick, the Audit Committee and reviewed that information. I know later this evening we're going to have a short presentation on that. I also attended a few other events, the beam signing at our new middle school, East Trails and that was such an incredible moment for me. Dr. Buck mentioned in speaking that day that that building and the education going on in that building for students will go years and years beyond our own lives. And I know many of us and many people in the community have also volunteered for Habitat for Humanity and have been able to sign the beam in a home and thinking about where that home is going to bring the family together and be a home going forward. I just felt that same energy as we were signing that beam. So I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity of being there together and I really enjoyed and valued that experience. Also, I want to thank Dr. Miller and Kyle Gorrell for their leadership to continue around our bond projects and just the energy and the enthusiasm and the hard work that's going into the work that all of our voters did to support those projects. So thank you. And then also, I was able to participate in our shared meeting with our city and our city council and that was fantastic. And I want to acknowledge the speakers that we had from the district, Shannon Booth, Dr. Miller, those programs that you spoke to and the participation and the ask for the partnership with our city and with our Economic Development Council was just fantastic. So thank you so much for sharing that information and thank you, Board Leadership and Dr. Buck for putting that evening together and I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board Member Hedrick?
Yeah, in addition to everything that Board Member Campbell discussed, the only additional meeting that I had since our last board meeting was a Board Policy meeting that I had since our last board meeting was a Board Policy Committee meeting, and that team is continuing to review board policy in the G Series, and we have another meeting next Monday, I believe, and so I'll be able to give you a report next month. So, other than that, I don't have anything to add to the comments.
Thank you. Board Member Allen?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, President Murdock. You and I were at the Government Relations Committee meeting on November 19th. I always report out at that meeting. Very important for our coordination there. The luncheon was that same day. I've had my fill of Rick McDowell, but, because he was at that meeting. I only say that because, you know, I love you. Yeah, you know, we're alums. East Trails Middle School Beam Signing, I appreciated that comment. Team Lee Summit, Kim and I shared some time in that, Board Member Fritchie. Really discussing the survey, common and substantial core values that came back from our employees. On the 6th of December, had very first time at Nutritional Services with Lori Donella, and their amazing work over there. Right across the hall from them is Distribution and Purchasing, and Ms. Bataglia and their team does fantastic work out of a building that looks like it's about ten by ten in square footage, but a little bit bigger in a basement that does amazing work out of that place for all of our schools across this district and the buildings. Also, had a tour and some time with Dr. Carrie Harrison at Leesum at High School, and incredible the juggling that they're doing in building that space right now. Had a tour with Dr. Meisenheimer at Leesum at North, and Trail Ridge Elementary recently. I'm catching up for some lost time there because I've not been in buildings too much over the past year. That was the eighth. On the 10th, Summit Point Elementary, Kim and I were invited just by chance, quite frankly, but really, really enjoyed it. The Student Council did some shopping at Walmart for Leesum at Social Services. So, we met at Walmart at 7:30 in the morning and proceeded to spend the $6,000 that they raised through coins for Christmas. And when you've got about fifteen shopping carts, each with about $300 or so, it was pretty exciting. I'll let Rodrick speak on our tour and time at Meadow Lane, and then we had our joint meeting with City Council, and then they come up in later discussion. And then in the midst of all of that, on December 7th, I visited Linda Ismer's office and signed up as a Board of Education candidate. So, I'll have some things to do for the next few months. Thanks.
Board Member Fritchie?
Okay, sorry. I thought you were going to give Vice President Marshall over there. Okay, Mike told you mostly about Team Lee Summit. I just wanted to add to the Team Lee Summit report that we did have sixty percent of the district staff who participated in the Team Lee Summit survey this year, which was up at a good, good little amount for this year. So, we were very happy that that many staff members participated, and that, we did that preliminary analysis, but we are going to dig into that more in the months of January and February. So, stay tuned, there's more to come regarding Team Lee Summit coming up in the next few months. Regarding Leesum at Educational Foundation, I think this was said last month, but the scholarship applications and peak grant applications were released on December 1st. They're due February the 23rd. So, if you have anybody who wants to apply for a scholarship or teachers applying for peak grants, deadline's the 23rd of February. Our representative from our construction, Mike Childs, reported the Taste of Lee Summit. Yes, March 5th. Put that in your brain. Sign up when the information comes out. Get your tickets for Taste of Lee Summit in person. It's going to be awesome. I'll be on the Restaurant Committee rounding up all those great restaurants this year for Team Lee Summit, and they are always awesome. We are still seeking some silent auction items and some live auction items for Taste of Lee Summit, so if you have something you'd like to contribute, that would be awesome. Let's see. Representatives from LSCF Board of the Directors are looking forward to meeting with some, a few members of the Board of Education, Dr. Buck, on January 6th. And in addition to that, finally, Leesum at Educational Foundation provided $99,000 to supply science kits for our, all of our elementary classrooms K through five throughout the district for the 21, 22 school year. So, that was major, and it's been a major undertaking of getting all those put together and getting those out, but they did it, and the teachers are reporting. It's fantastic. And Board Members, I'd like you to please read that, go to that report after the meeting if you would, because there's a video embedded in that report that shows the teachers' comments about the science kits, about how much they appreciate those and how much it's helping them with their curriculum. So, thank you very much. Everybody's mentioned all the other activities.
Thank you. Board Member Sparks?
Outside of what everyone have already mentioned, as Mike Allen said, that I did a school tour at Meadow Lanes, I got to wear PJs, and so I don't get to go to work that much and get to wear pajamas. And so, I got to play basketball with the kids. Also, Dr. Jay is what they affectionately call her, the kids. They just love her. She's the principal there. She was able to give me a tour of the school. But then also, the great thing was there was two student leaders. There was also the leaders of the tour, and so being able to see a fifth grader and a sixth grader to take the initiative and the leadership of showing the, how proud they are of their school and all the things that they're doing, that was great. The other piece is, they have a room, I forgot the name, so I apologize, but where elementary students from kindergarten up are actually beginning the foundations of doing robotics. And I think that is very awesome with the things that they're building and being able to utilize their hands and then just doing work. And so, to be a kindergarten and do that, I wish I had something like that when I was growing up. And then the other thing is also got to meet with Leesum at Cares Youth Advisory Board, and so this is a group of young people. This is, I will say that the kids that have been attending are from Leesum at. We have about eight kids that are showing up, but they're able to talk about student issues. And so, to be able to see students advocate for themselves tonight, that's what we get to talk about. We get to talk about students advocating for themselves, talk about issues that they're going through, and basically giving them the voice of leadership. Our kids are our future, and so seeing them grow in leadership is great to see. Thank you.
I know I got to chime in. Rodrick, I loved that, and I'm glad you brought up the room, and I can't think of the name of the room, but it was for STEM education, and Mr. Burks, the teacher in there, as we were leaving, he said, had a class coming in, and his attention was to the students, because he said, "We really have a lot of work to do, but we really got to get these loud adults out of our hallway." So, he was, had his priorities in order. That was good.
I think they were talking about your tie.
It's already getting a little bit late, isn't it? There we go. Vice President Marshall?
Nothing additional to report, President Murdock.
That was a very quick report. Nicely done. Just, just a couple of things. For me, I did participate in the CAC Steering Committee meeting a few weeks ago. One of the big things was to not lose track of the transition that our fifth and sixth graders are going to have into the middle school arena as more kids are going to middle school next year, and how the CAC could help with some of those transition pieces as students enter those particular buildings as we go. So, I think that that was a really good discussion that we had. We had our leadership meeting, Vice President Marshall and I, with Dr. Buck. That obviously went well. These Trails, all of that kind of stuff is good. I did want to bring up one thing here, and it's a little bit out of place, but while I have the mic on, you just have to deal with it. I'm sorry. I do want to take a moment to congratulate Dr. Emily Miller, who is now the Superintendent It's very well deserved, and we are very happy for you, and I'm very mad at you, all at the same time. So, right, I think that that is unanimous. There's no Christmas gifts for you, but we are happy for you. So, there you go. So, I did, I wanted to make sure that everybody knew and that congratulate. Right, she doesn't start until July 1st of 2022, so, right, so she has a lot of work to do here in the next six months. So, there we go. Okay, we are going to move on here to Item Six. This is our Finance Report, and I did not ask beforehand who's got it, so it looks like it's Board Member Campbell, so we'll turn it over to Board Member Campbell.
I got it. And before I start the Finance Report, I just want to recognize you, Board President Murdock. I really appreciated that following your CAC meeting, you polled with us and discussed with us what items that we felt were important to ask the CAC Committee to also represent and look at. I appreciated that feedback loop, so thank you for taking the time to do that.
Not a problem.
All right. And so, now we'll move on to the Finance Report. We did review the contracts, $15,000 and less. There was one item there that I had a question on, and that was a new contract with Emporia State for student teachers. And so, I asked that we get a list of all the organizations that, colleges that we work with to bring in student teachers, because I thought that might be beneficial information for us. No cost there, just informational, but I think good information for us to look at as well. The Follett East Trails Middle School Library was an item that was on discussion. We reviewed that. We also reviewed which budget item that would hit, because I wasn't sure if that's an operations budget item or if that's in the bond budget. And so, that was shared that it was within the bond budget, so that's where those funds will fall. We also looked at the Missouri United School Insurance Council Commercial Insurance Renewal. That's music. And I appreciated the reminder of, so that goes out for RFP every six years. We approved that as our insurance organization earlier this year. With that, Ryan did share that this agreement is down by $10,500, due largely to workers' comp decreases and a credit that we're given as a 10% membership credit. So, that cost overall is lower this year for us. And then we talked about the Missouri Capital Asset Advantage Treasury Resolution. And again, this is more informational for us. It just gives us another option, another organization to invest our money on. So, Mr. Holder did a great job of reviewing that with us, and I'm sure if we have additional questions, he'd be glad to help us out with that as well. So, the next item that I'd like to ask for is that we approve the transfer of $3,929,277.45 from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund.
We have a motion in a second for 6.02. That's the transfer of almost four million from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund. Is there any discussion on that item? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Board Member Campbell?
The next item, I move to approve the Treasurer's Report and the Payment of the Bills.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for 6.03, the Treasurer's Report and Payment of the Bills. Any discussion on that item? All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else? Board Member Campbell?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. A speedy Finance Report this month. Thanks. Excellent. All right, we're going to move on to Item Seven. This is our Consent Agenda that Board Members have agreed to, and then we'll get to our items for decision here in a second. So, if we could get a motion for our Consent Agenda tonight, I would appreciate it.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda items as presented.
We have a motion in a second for our Consent Agenda items, 7.01 through 7.17 tonight. And as we've talked about, we're going to go ahead and just move to a vote. So, all those in favor, and you can see all of the documents associated with those if you're in our Board Docs. It's a way for us to get through a lot of contracts and stuff quickly. So, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Any opposed? And that carries unanimously as well. We do have two items for decision tonight. 8.01, that's approval of our audit, and I do think is, do we have a representative from KPM? Okay, sorry, I didn't see you over in the corner. I apologize. So, we'll have a quick presentation on the audit, and then if we have any questions or comments, we can do that as well.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for giving me a little bit of time to present here. I'll try and keep the comments brief. And my name is John Cummings. I'm with KPM CPAs as a partner in their Audit Services Department, and you should have a bound booklet and a couple of stapled letters. Just on some highlights here, we, we met with the Audit Review Committee and had a good meeting and went over all the details of all the numbers, so I won't get up here and sound like an auctioneer running through all the numbers for you, because, you know, time is precious and that's a lot of numbers to absorb. So, they're in there. If you have any questions when you do look through the audit report, please feel free to give me a call or shoot me an email and ask whatever might come up, and I'll be happy to answer. On page four of the bound booklet is the Independent Auditor's Report on the Financial Statements, and it discusses the report on the financial statements, management's responsibility for the financial statements, our responsibilities as auditors, and then gives the opinion on the financial statements on the next page in the section called Opinions. Basically, when you read through it, what you'll see is you've received an unmodified or a clean opinion. That's the best possible result, and the same opinion as you received last year on your financial statements. So, good job on that. On page 11 of the booklet is the Statement of Assets Fund Balances for your governmental funds. Those are your General Fund, your Special Revenue Fund, the Debt Service Fund, and Capital Projects Fund. And just wanted to kind of point this out, because the financial news was pretty good for the year. In the General Fund, you had $66,481,322. That's down about, or up about $2.3 million compared to last year. Student activities were restricted at $1,185,808, which is up about $70,000 compared to last year. The unrestricted amount was up about $2.26 million. In your Debt Service Fund, you ended the year at $41,694,773, which is up $3.9 million compared to last year. And the Capital Projects Fund ended the year at $159,742,424, which is up $145.7 million, mostly due to bond proceeds that were on deposit to do the many construction projects that you have going in the district that the students are going to love when they're done. So, $149 million of that was still restricted as of June 30th. So, the other item on there is, of course, your Health Insurance Internal Service Fund amount, kind of down to the lower right of that, had $9,739,546 in that at the end of June. That's up about $1.7 million compared to last year. So, as I said, the financials were pretty solid for the year ended June 30, 2021. So, with that, I'll move on to one other area. On page 52, you get a nice snapshot of the audit results on the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs, and this is a part of your federal audit, which is part of the booklet, but it does provide a nice summary of what happened during the year. It talks about the financial statement audit, which received an unmodified opinion, but it also points out that on internal controls over financial reporting, there were no material weaknesses identified in your internal controls and no reportable significant deficiencies, and there was no material noncompliance in the financial statements. On the financial, or the federal awards part of things, which is your single audit that's on your federal programs, on internal control over major federal programs, there were no material weaknesses identified and no significant deficiencies, and there was no noncompliance on your federal programs, which with all of the changes and everything that's been going on is, is not a given necessarily. So, good work in making sure that you were compliant with all those federal program requirements. We did test the Child Nutrition Cluster and the COVID-19 Coronavirus Relief Fund monies that amounted to about 57% coverage on your federal awards. So, we're only required to test 40, but those two programs basically hit 57%. So, we're well above the threshold on that, and so with that, I would like to also compliment you on your students that were participating in the meeting earlier. They're a very impressive group. So, also, I would be very remiss if I got up here and talked for a few minutes and did not mention the fact that everybody that helped us on the audit make it possible to get through an audit of a district this size. Dr. Buck, Dr. Miller, well, you kind of walked into it. For those that may not know, Mr. Holder walked into pretty much an audit on day one. So, that's always fun when somebody's going through stuff and you're just learning it all as you go. So, he was great. All the team in the Leadership Office that helped out. We come in, and they have their normal job to do, and they're trying to get through a day that's probably enough on its own, and then you throw four auditors at them essentially and asking for all kinds of things about things that might have happened a year ago. And they handled it all with grace, and we're always very kind and very responsive, so we certainly appreciate all of that. So, with that, I will call this to a close. If you have any questions about the audit, feel free to ask, and also, I'm, I'm available all year, so anything you need along the way, feel free to give me a call.
First off, I don't know that Mr. Holder would consider it fun to walk into an audit, so I think we, we might want to ask him the definition of that. I am going to lead off with a question, though, only because this is, I think- I am going to lead off with a question, though, only because this is, I think, either the second or third year in a row, that on your additional information report on trying to get the district to reduce purchasing cards, is there a threshold we're trying to get to in terms of what an accounting firm would like to see us get down to in terms of the checkout procedure for cards? Is there, like, what's, to get, I essentially am trying to ask, how do we get that off the list? Because it's been there a couple of times now.
Well, I think, I think that you're actually almost there, to be honest with you. When we started out here, I think there were nine hundred and seventy-two cards, and that's off of memory. And then it dropped down to six hundred and something, I don't remember off the top of my head on that one. And now we're down to substantially less than that even. And I think it's down to a point where really, it's probably going to go away in the next one, I would imagine, with the processes that have been implemented. And also, the district is putting together a response to these that's specific to these four things that we'll be looking at during the next year to show exactly, you know, here's the things that have been done, here's the procedures that changed. So it's a combination of getting the cards down, but also changing the process and procedure so that it kind of streamlines it, and makes it just more possible to manage it.
Makes sense. It's like our Lee Somer West retaining wall at this point, so. I know, it just keeps coming back around. For other board members, are there any other comments or questions related to the audit tonight? You're off the hook.
All right, well, thank you all very much for the time, and have a safe and happy holiday.
Okay, we will, we will accept a motion now then on item eight point zero one.
I move that the board approve the twenty, twenty, twenty-one audit as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for eight point zero one, to approve tonight's audit as presented by KPM. Any other discussion? Ms. Sizmerk, we have a roll call vote for our items for decision tonight, please.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
Vice President Marshall?
Aye.
Board Member Campbell?
Aye.
Board Member Hedrick?
Aye.
Board Member Allen?
Aye.
Board Member Fritchie?
Aye.
President Murdock?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thanks again, John, we appreciate it very much. Eight point zero two is our second item for decision tonight. This is the book appeal on All Boys Aren't Blue, which Dr. Flack shared with us the process in our work session today for how that book was reviewed, and then the committee's recommendation. After the committee's recommendation, it was then appealed to us as a board. So we can take a motion on that and then have any final discussion. Board Member Campbell?
I move to retain All Boys Aren't Blue Without Restriction, following the committee's recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to uphold the committee's recommendations to keep All Boys Aren't Blue Without Restriction within our high school libraries. Is there any discussion on this particular item? I know we talked about it in work session, but if anybody has any final comments, feel free. Board Member Campbell, and then Board Member Allen.
I would recommend, for everyone watching and the folks that have participated in the meeting tonight, that you do watch the work session comments, because I think it was great to hear Dr. Flack's overview. It was also good to review the additional content that had been shared with us, and I think there was great discussion by our board, board members around this. So I'd encourage everyone to watch that work session if you have questions around this.
Appreciate the comment. Board Member Allen?
Thank you, sir. I reiterate, Ms. Campbell, what you mentioned, and I specifically asked our videographer back there if that was going to be available, and certainly up, because we did have extensive conversation about this book. And, you know, I went into this, I didn't explain this at the work session, but I went into reading this book with some trepidation. The two pages that are, our question or what have you was certainly sent to me by text, by a few, email, you name it, had recommendations that the book, you know, should be polled, shouldn't be polled, should be unrestricted, not unrestricted. And in the work session, I mentioned this book, but I also mentioned this book quite a bit, and a book that our employees and our board has worked through this book. We'll complete this by spring break, I think, right? May, okay, sorry. Yeah, spring break's a little, little quick for twenty-four hundred employees or what have you. But one of the things I mentioned in the work session was, right up front in this book, and some explanation of, the book is called Belonging Through the Culture of Dignity, and quite, 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 actually, the essence of accepting an individual, a human being, for who they are as a human being, right? To earn respect, but acceptance on the basis of belonging and dignity is inherent in who we are as human beings, right? It's, based on research, they, these, right, contend that when students feel a sense of belonging, they will achieve. This is the forward section, so you can get it in the bulk of the book at your leisure. It's a book about belonging, the very heart and soul of teaching and learning. And if we are, in fact, building our culture, or reinforcing our culture, or bringing our years and years of our school district's success back to the essence of dignity and belonging, I was challenged to some degree by one of the media specialists, that if we believe in this book, we should offer this book as a choice. This book is not forced, it's not in our curriculum, it's a book of choice. The individuals have the choice. And freedom of reading, I thought the students comment was very interesting tonight, the reader has the right not to read, as well as the right to read. And when we, when you go to the American Library Association, affirms that all libraries are forms for information and ideas, and the following basic policies should guide their services, readers have a right to read. The freedom of individuality, as quoted to me by a graduate of LSR seven who's gone on to get her degree in library sciences, now teaching at the university level, or I should say, at the library at a university level. The individual has the freedom of identity, the freedom of choice, the freedom of independence by the ability to, in fact, read a book that is by choice, that is, that is available, but by the reader's decision. Gentleman talked to me today and said, it's not an accidental read, it's an intentionally sought-out book by those who want to read it. Would I have read this in high school? I doubt. Was I glad I read it as a board member? Very much so. Experiences that I would have never had, but as Ms. Fritchie mentioned, experiences that I'm glad I read. Another comment that was kind of interesting, and I said, well, what about a restriction, right? Well, then, you question, and it was pressed to me to say, pressed to, to me by, impressed to me, I'm sorry. Does restriction actually further, the quote was further stigmatized, marginalize an individual or individuals who are already marginalized to some degree? Does it stereotype the student even further from being accepted in dignity and belonging, and an opportunity to even reach for their own identity if they're hard-pressed for that? Does a restriction place or limit the experience where kids have an opportunity to experience and have support where they might otherwise, might not otherwise have it? As much as I said in the earlier work session, my daughter might be reading, you know, What to Expect When I'm Expecting at Age Sixteen. I mean, I'd approve of it, may I approve of it, yeah, probably, what have you. But she has that opportunity to read that as, as, as her freedom and right to choose, and ideally, I'm, my wife and I are having that conversation with that daughter ahead of time. But I, I, I probably turned a little bit through the essence of reading this book and learning a little bit more about this gentleman's experience that I never would otherwise have. But again, a choice to read it. I had the choice not to read it, but I chose to read it as a responsibility of being here. So, I just, I appreciate the opportunity to have this book among us. I have read some other books and listened to some other books that, for the past two and a half, three years, that I thought I'd never read as well, which I've really found quite interesting, recommended by a number of folks up here and by some others who are in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Allen. Any other comments before we take a vote on this item? I think for most of us, a lot of us, the comments in work session are what, if people want to know where we stand on this, so. Ms. Sizmerk, can you take a roll call vote, please?
Board Member Fritchie?
Aye.
Board Member Allen?
Aye.
Board Member Hedrick?
Aye.
Board Member Campbell?
Aye.
Vice President Marshall?
Aye.
Board Member Sparks?
Aye.
President Murdock?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We're going to move to item nine point zero one. This is our alternative methods of instruction, and for board members, this is a very brief kind of direction to the calendar committee, who has been meeting here in terms of what we want to do with AMI days. So this is only a discussion, there's no decision tonight on this. As some of you know, we can have up to five, is that right? That's correct, Dr. Buck, right?
Thirty-six hours, so five full days. If we go six, we'd go past it.
Right, so we can have up to five AMI days slash snow days, as people are, would call them, obviously. And we need to make a decision for the calendar committee, or at least help them in, do we believe that AMI days essentially are of good, of great enough benefit that we want to have them as a part of the calendar? Or would we like them or prefer them to figure out a way with the calendar to not incorporate or an AMI day? So, for example, a snow day would become a snow day, if that makes sense. So, Dr. Buck, I know has a couple of things to add.
So I'm going to start, and then Dr. Barker is going to follow. So this became a part of the options of last school year. So, in the nineteen-twenty school year, when you adopted the calendar, you approved five AMI days for last year, so last year's first day, year you could have it. They do not count as snow days. So what, basically, the state statute says if you miss, and they finally did this because they're, you know, the governors were always having to waive days, they put a formula in, you have to make up your first thirty-six hours missed, and then make it make up half of the next forty-eight hours, so every other day, basically. With that, now, AMI came in last year, and you can do school virtually up to thirty-six hours before you start with the inclement weather days. So we've experienced it last year, but probably before we got to experience it, you approved the calendar for this year, and put AMI days in there. And the calendar committee's coming to you in January, that usually would be this month, but they, they're, you know, got one more month this year, and the, given direction to them if they want to, if you want to have AMI days in there, or just start right off the bat with the makeup days. And I'm going to ask Dr. Barker to just go over what potential impacts that may have instructionally.
Right, thank you. So from an instructional impact, there are a couple of things to know. A, it's important to know how we're handling AMI days instructionally. So the expectation is that those are asynchronous days, meaning that students don't necessarily have to be logged on at a certain time to be engaged synchronously with, with their classes, and that information or assignments be posted by nine AM in Schoology. That was actually a conscientious conversation about understanding that we want to absolutely engage our students in curriculum that day in academics, but that also those days may look very different on a day in which there's a lot of good snowman snow out there, or some other things that might allow some flexibility in our learning and the activities that our families are playing. Probably most important instructionally would be the thought, as it would be in terms of the impact against budding up against our summer school. And so what we know is that if we don't use AMI days, those days become end-of-the-year add-on days. We also know that as part of legislative decision, we have a much later required start than we have in the past. So one of the questions would just put us in a position of academically, what does that mean for us in terms of count? How close, how far out would we need to get if snow days started to happen, where we would then begin to potentially either have to push summer school, or potentially plan for summer school to have a larger cushion in terms of distance from our end of the year? So those are just a couple of academic factors to consider as you have the initial conversation.
And like I said, this, oh, sorry, go ahead, Dr. Buck.
If you, if you don't mind, last year's summer school, we finished right before July fourth, if I recall, and we had a much larger summer school, which we needed. And so I think that need is out there still. When you go past July fourth, we tend to have a little smaller summer school. So there is an impact on summer school, not that summer school is our core, summer school is an additional and an option, it's not a core, but I think that's something to consider as well.
So if you just want to offer kind of a brief comment, and Dr. Hedrick, do you mind if I kind of lead off of how we kind of arrived at this, and then we'll get to, get to your comments, is that all right? Okay, well, go ahead, go ahead and ask your question, then, go ahead and ask your question, absolutely.
Sorry, my question is, do we have any data from students in terms of the AMI days? And, you know, how they perceive them valuable, not valuable, that kind of thing?
I don't know that we've done a survey directly asking them. I certainly, we would be able to get engagement data or participation data, that's how we collect our attendance for the day, is via engagement or participation in those activities. But in terms of perception data, that's not something we've specifically collected.
But, but you do have the ability to get engagement data from, I, I think I would really want to see some of that before I'd make a decision one way or the other, to be honest.
So to be, I want to make sure I'm not overpromising, or, when I say engagement data, literally, that would be how we keep attendance. So essentially, what we would have is the number of students who engaged, like, on a discussion group, or turned something in, and that would be denoted by the teacher then marking that student present for that day, because there was work.
That, that's fine, I just think that data is important before making a decision.
One of the things I, I would like to offer to the, to the calendar committee to at least kind of think through is the possibility of the first couple of days not being AMI. There's two reasons for that. Number one is, a lot of times when we have a snow day, it becomes on an emergent basis because it just happens, right? Now, sometimes teachers are saying, hey, watch out, we might have a snow day the next day, that kind of thing, but sometimes they don't. And as a result, I still think, even though we say that they are asynchronous days, I'm not sure that we're getting as much value. And I'm speaking from seeing what my kids have done on some of those days, I don't believe that it is, that they are getting the value that they would get, even if we push it to the end of the school year and have an in-person day, I think they get more out of that. The second thing, though, that I would like the board to at least remember is, we are, we have support staff that only are going to get paid on three of those days. So if we go above three AMI days, we no longer are able to pay our support staff. If we go for the first two days, for example, and say, hey, the first snow day is going to be a snow day, the second day is going to be a snow day, and then AMI, you know, maybe days three, three and up, based on our average number of snow days that you sent us already, which is about four, between four and five, we're also covering our support staff that way, which I think becomes very critical. And, and I do think that that would be something that we need to keep in mind, that we are sharing with our staff, hey, these first two days, we would just have snow days, let the kids go, play, get out. That also, by the way, lets staff go, de-stress just a little bit, all that kind of stuff. And then, we have the expectation that starting with day three of any snow days, we might move to AMI days. That's just an alternative, something I would like people to consider. If there's other ideas, I'm all ears, but I think that would be something to at least consider, and I think that would still fit us in for summer school, so. Board Member Fritchie?
You know, it's really scary, I think you were inside my brain, because that's
I promise I wasn't.
I'm glad, I'm glad, but that's exactly what I was going to say, is why not make the first two actual snow days? And I base that on the feedback that came in last year. Remember? I don't know if you remember this, though, when we, we had some parents saying, hey, just let the kids be kids, let them play in the snow, you know, on these days, they look forward to these. In the past, everybody's always looked forward to the snow days, oh, maybe we'll get a snow day, and they can go play and just be carefree and not have to worry about checking in and making sure that you're doing your assignments on those first few days. So, I would, I, I really think that's a great idea. I think let's do that and, and wait for those, if we need to, asynchronous days, days three, four, five, whatever. So I'm with you on that. Thank you.
And I do think still collecting that data becomes a very important piece, what are we getting out of it? What challenges do staff still, still see, do even provide those assignments into Schoology on a quick turnaround, those kinds of things? And some of them already have assignments there, so I don't want to, you know, a lot of them have kind of planned for that contingency, so I want to respect that as well, but just, just something to think about as we go forward here. Any other comments here for this particular topic? And remember, board members, we'll see the updated calendar coming up in January, so. Dr. Barker, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Just want to get clear direction, so is that the will of the board to try to convince the calendar committee to build in two first weather, inclement weather days to be no school and add-on to the end, and then after that, days three, four, five and up, AMI? Because they're, they're going to come to you in January with a proposed calendar.
I was just going to say, due to respect to Dr. Hendrick, I thought that we were supposed to get this information first, and then basically kind of give some direction on what we're doing.
I do think, I do think, Dr. Buck, that we could get it turned around even before Christmas to tell the calendar committee what the will is.
Okay, so we'll go through board leadership then?
We'll go through board leadership.
That, that is totally fine.
Get directive.
Thank you.
Uh huh, no problem. Okay, we are going to move on to items ten point, two item, excuse me, ten point zero one, which is our professional development program evaluation, so this will be a presentation. So this will be a presentation, so we will turn the mic over.
Good evening. I am grateful for the opportunity tonight to share with the board some updates regarding our professional development program. As you know, I am new to the position, and so tonight, really, I'm going to take an approach, given the transition in leadership from Dr. Daniels to me, to really focus on where we're at currently with the professional development program, to share some of the goals that we have for this year and the progress that we're already making towards those goals, so. I'll begin with just a program overview. Our department really has three functions. Primarily, we manage 1% funding that is issued by the state for the very purpose of teacher professional learning. We look at that through the lens of district professional learning initiatives, as well as dispersing the money for building-focused professional learning that is co-managed by our professional development committee, which is comprised of a teacher representative, one or two, in the case of our secondary buildings. From each building, they are elected by their peers, and they help manage the process of managing those funds in their own building, but also provide some oversight and direction at the district level as well. So that's one of our probably biggest responsibilities. Also, within our department, we manage several programs, and those are our Beginning Teacher Assistance Program, which is required for recertification, brand-new teachers, we support those folks. We have a very robust onboarding program for our new hires to LSR 7. It's our new teacher academy, we offer multiple sessions throughout the summer to really create that sense of belonging for new staff. And then finally, we do offer continuing education opportunities for our staff through our graduate courses that are taught in-house by our own staff. That program is also managed in our department. And then finally, this is ever-changing as our CSIP changes and our district initiatives change, we do work with all of those initiatives to help support what that looks like across our district for our staff. So these are really our three primary functions. We are primarily guided by those guidelines the state provides us with how 1% funds are managed, which is dictated, of course, by that Outstanding Schools Act. And then we work in accordance with our strategic plan. This year, that's really guided by Action Plan 2.4, which states that we will ensure professional learning aligns with current best practice implementation. And then we are funded largely by that 1% allocation this year, that looked like approximately $730,000. We also lean on our Title II A funding, which this year was approximately $341,000. And then we do have a small department budget, and all of this money really works to, to move forward those learning opportunities for staff. So I would be remiss in saying, even though we're going to focus tonight on where we're at and where we're headed, if I didn't acknowledge that we're really working on a foundation of a lot of success in this department, as evidenced by some of the feedback we have received from different stakeholders. So principals have cited the support that we provide for new teachers, the strong support we offer for staff in general, opportunities for schools to have some ownership in working with those 1% teams and their building, teams to determine how to spend their funds to support their own building improvement plans, the access to resources and the ability to receive the training that's needed. Most recently, some of the feedback about this summer's new teacher academy, we had a staff member mention that I felt valued the minute I walked in, and that's a new great feeling. And again, given our focus on belonging, I think that's high praise. And then just this year, one of our BTOP, our Beginning Teacher Assistance Program participants, a third-year teacher, provided some feedback. He said, it's hard to be away from the classroom for any period of time, however, my cup was much more full upon leaving. So I think we have a lot of success historically in this program and certainly are just working to continue building on that. So I'd really like to do a deeper dive into those three primary functions of our office, and we'll start by talking about that management of 1% funding, but I thought it might be a good idea just to review how our district manages those funds. So once we receive that money from the state, we have a lot, a significant portion of that for building usage. So we use a formula that's based on the number of staff at each site, that money is dispersed to each building, and that is managed locally by teams in those buildings to determine professional learning needs for their staff that are aligned to building goals or district goals. And then the rest of that is allocated at the district level. But even though it's considered district-level funding, it really is used to create just systematic approaches to professional learning that still benefits each teacher. So these are the goals in that particular area. As driven by Action Plan 2.4, we are working to create a comprehensive three-year PD plan aligned with our CSIP and guided by needs. I can speak to future plans in January, the Instructional Operations Team is meeting to begin thinking about the 22, 23 school year and the 23, 24 school year, and what our identified needs are and priorities are, such that we can begin aligning our calendars and our funding to those priorities, and begin thinking very proactively about how we'll collect feedback to continue gauging the needs as we move forward. This year, also have worked really hard to evaluate our professional development committee and how we function, and being very clear in our purpose. The primary function, again, as I mentioned, is to help manage those 1% funds. But it's really exciting when you talk to those folks and survey them, as I've been able to. We have really dedicated staff that are not just wanting to manage money, but really wanting to be involved directly with how we do professional learning and really wanting to enhance that. So we are, I'm working with my, our co-chairs for that PDC, we have an elementary co-chair and a secondary co-chair who really do a fine job of leading that group, to really think about how we can get those staff members involved in meaningful ways to move forward the district initiatives. And then, as part of that process, I've been meeting individually with each one of those PDC members to really get a sense of where we're at, in terms of ensuring that we are maintaining fidelity to those 1% guidelines, but also really working to create some clarity and best practice, I would say, amongst that work. And so part of that is, we are working currently to establish a hub for shared best practices, shared access to resources, so that we can streamline that process and make sure that we're very efficient and that we're really maximizing those dollars to the best of our, our ability. And then certainly, we continue to, to monitor those 1% budgets to make sure we're making the most of our access. In the realm of our department-managed programs, our goals are largely driven by that Action Plan 2.4. So I can speak first to our Beginning Teacher Assistance Program. We've been tasked with revising that program to align with our current CSIP. I think one of the, the testaments to the program is that we continue to lose the leaders of it, because they are moving into administrative roles, they are career navigators, and so I have four new program facilitators this year, which gave us just a really great opportunity to have a, a vision meeting this summer. We really identified beliefs, needs of new teachers, alignment issues with new CSIP, and have worked to create a new program. One of the most exciting parts of our program so far this year is we are taking our brand-new first and second and third-year teachers into veteran teachers' classrooms, and we are focusing the learning and building networks for them. I was able to step in yesterday and facilitate a lab at Summit Point Elementary in a fourth-grade classroom. We had six new teachers, first-year teachers, in an 11-year veteran teachers' classroom, and they were learning together. And by the end of our time yesterday afternoon, we had exchanged email addresses, we were asking questions of each other, and I think it's a really powerful networking and learning opportunity that we're making available now in this BTOP program. In terms of our new teacher academy, I think that's something that's very strong. If you didn't know, Board Member Fritchie has a great deal of expertise and talent as a bus tour guide. One of the pieces of that program, we do take our brand-new hires on a bus tour throughout Lee Summit, so they see our community, they see schools, we take them downtown, and we relied on some expertise and some history knowledge there. But it is something that we're just continuing to refine, the feedback continues to be very, very positive in that program. Our Continuing Education Graduate Course Program is something that we have spent a lot of time this year looking at, really trying to think about it through the lens of our user and user experience, our staff members, wanting to ensure that the learning that occurs through that program is, is high quality, that it's aligned with our goals as a system, thinking about our instructor experience, and then also some awareness around the financial implications of this program. And have worked with different leaders, multiple meetings at central office, superintendent's leadership team, and are working to begin some changes. The most immediate changes will occur this spring, we've changed some of our pacing decisions and have increased some fees to bring it into the 2022 realm of, of fees. And then this summer, we'll act, we'll implement some additional changes regarding the content of our courses and ensure some alignment issues. But we are well underway in working towards this goal as well. And then that final responsibility of our department is really thinking about our current realities in terms of our strategic plan and being very proactive and thoughtful about how we support those initiatives. I would say this year, there's definitely an increased emphasis on coordination and communication coming out of our office. We have established a shared district calendar that has all of the professional learning in the system in one place. I'm working closely with the leaders of other departments to ensure that it's a shared, combined effort to make sure that those initiatives are smoothly managed and communicated. And then also, one of those CSIP-driven initiatives this year, and Dr. Barker referenced this earlier this evening, is Action Plan 1.1, and that's around the inquiry model instructional framework, where I've had the honor to work with our lead learners and to offer some professional learning for them around this particular goal. So this really is that, the focus of our, our CSIP-driven initiatives. So I'll just end with this, and I'll read it to you. It says, "Good teaching is not an accident. While some teachers may naturally be more gifted than others, all effective teaching is a result of study, reflection, practice, and hard work. A teacher can never know enough about how a student learns, what impedes the student's learning, and how the teacher's instruction can increase the student's learning. Professional development is the only means to gain such knowledge. Regardless of achievement level, our students will learn more if their teachers regularly engage in high-quality professional development. If we ask our teachers to be lead learners in their classrooms, we have a responsibility as a system to give them the learning that they need to be effective, and I find it a great privilege to be part of the work, to lead that work as, as part of the professional development office." So with that said, I would open to questions if you have any.
Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Janeway, appreciate that very much. Board Member Sparks?
I am smiling really big behind this mask. It is always great when we are giving our teachers exactly what they desire and what they need so that they're at their best. And I just believe when our teachers are at their best, then they're able to bring out the best out of all of our students. And so I appreciate the work that you're doing, I would ask that it continues. I do just have one question, and the question that I have was around, oh, another comment, that I enjoy the fact that we are being engrossed as a district with our CSIP, that we are moving along with it, with it being a, a living document of us actually doing the work, and we're all following it through all of the different departments throughout the district, and so I also enjoy seeing that. But the question that I have is, when we are getting, when we're looking at our different groups of leadership, that we are pulling together to, to be able to see what the needs are that are being desired, how are we pulling those certain staffs together? Are we just picking from administrators? Are we, just kind of give me an idea, paint a picture of who are we gaining that information from, of what the needs are?
In terms of what our needs are?
In terms, in terms of what our needs are, of how we can best support.
Sure. So I think that we have a lot of processes in our system, and I think it depends on what particular facet of our work we're talking about, right? So if we're talking about the programs that live under our department, I think that we do a pretty good job of really trying to identify the target audience, and the, like I said, the end user. And so, at least in our department, we survey staff and we survey some of those stakeholders to see what are those needs. So very specific to your question, but as we think about the professional development committee, we've surveyed them, we have data and conversation anecdotal and numerical that gives us a sense of where we need to go and what we need to do. In terms of more system thinking, I think that operates through the organization of our system. So I think Dr. Kenny works very closely with our elementary principals, and that comes back up through Instructional Operations Team, and then those departments all work together to ensure that we're connecting the dots and also meeting the needs that we're assessing.
Just one last statement, I will say that I'm a little jealous that Ms. Fritchie was the only one to be able to ride the bus, so next time, I would love to be on the bus.
I heard a volunteer as a tour guide.
That is correct, that is correct.
I heard it.
She has a beautiful script, yeah.
Any other questions or comments regarding this presentation? Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
We have one last item, that's item 11, our written reports. We had our library media services evaluation and our bond budget update. So if anybody has any comments on their written report, Board Member Fritchie? Oh, no, I'm sorry, you didn't hit your button. So there you go.
Thank you, I, this is, I know this was, Dr. Fleck, this is your first year to, to organize this, right? Yes, okay, you did a very nice job. Well, I think, I think the one really cool thing about this is, well, there are lots of cool things about it, but that you broke down for us a look at, that you really are very conscious about the, the ethnicity percentages in the buildings, and then trying to match the amount of literature that speaks to those ethnicities. And I think that's important, that, that isn't being ignored, you know? There were just so many great aspects of this that I, I got to tell you, I had to share it with Floyd Pentland, I don't know if you remember Floyd? He was the library media specialist at Lee Summit High School for years, and then went over to North and then retired from there. And, and he just, he, he just thought it was an amazing report, that he was just so impressed that, that library and library science and everything is alive and well in Lee Summit School District, and you're doing great things, and you make him very proud. And so I, I just thought I'd share that with you, coming from him, I think that's high praise, because he's been president of MASL before, so, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments on our written reports tonight? Okay, everybody, we made it. On behalf of the Board of Education, obviously, we want to wish everybody a happy holiday as we go into Christmas break, so enjoy the holiday, and we will see people after the new year. This meeting is adjourned, thanks.